Students, Michael Otis and Hannah Bryson took a trip to the MIAA Student Leadership Summit. Today was a half day for CIT Day, and at the high school, students had a picture retake day.
On November third and fourth, the Lamplighters Drama Club will be putting on the one-act play that goes wrong. The shows are at 7:00 PM on the third and 4:00 PM on the fourth. Tickets are $10 for students and senior citizens, $15 for adults, and free for any Wilmington Public Schools employees that show their ID at the door. The Wilmington High School Band will also be participating in the Veterans Day Ceremony at 11:00 AM on the Town Common.
Wilmington High School has already been visited by many colleges such as UMass Amherst, Syracuse University, and the College of the Holy Cross, and we will soon be welcoming UMass Boston, Plymouth State University, and Southern New Hampshire University very soon.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the committee?
I just think that the fundraising, the Wilmington Tea fundraiser, I thought that was ingenious. And it's so great to see a creative fundraiser with going towards just a different type of fundraiser. I think that's great. Good for you all.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Wonder if this drive up.
Next, we have some updates from the Performing Arts Department. Mr. Farrar.
Good evening, everyone. Good. How are you doing?
Good.
So, thank you all for inviting me here tonight to provide some updates on the Performing Arts Department. So, first off, we'd like to, or I'd like to kind of acknowledge our new staff member this year, Ms. Erin Ryan, at the Woburn Street School, teaching general music. Ms. Ryan came to us from Gordon College and has a background in vocal performance and, of course, music education. Several of the colleagues, speaking of the elementary schools, are thrilled to have their music classrooms back this year as a result of the kindergarten consolidation at the West Middle School. They've done a great job making those spaces a real, you know, great learning environment for those young kids in the elementary level. The middle school chorus levels have grown. Eighth grade has grown, seventh grade has grown, and even more remarkably, sixth grade has grown 30% in terms of last year. So, kudos to the fifth-grade chorus teachers at the North and the West. They definitely kind of sparked that interest in the kids. At the high school level, we're working toward the district goal of offering more performing arts elective. So, this year, we're excited to offer for the first time songwriting. That's a class that sparked a lot of interest from my music theory and arranging class. Kids kind of wanted more from that. So, Mr. LeBron is teaching songwriting this year, and he received 10 keyboards and 10 microphones through the WEF Tech Grant. He got those last year, and those are set up, ready to go for the spring semester. The Drama Club, also in terms of numbers, has grown both at the middle school and the high school. Really great numbers there. Their play, the play that goes wrong, as I forget if it was them or Jackson, one of them already covered this, but that goes up next Friday, opening night, and Friday and Saturday, and the musical is March 21st to 23rd, the High School Musical. And they're going to continue the tradition of inviting the seventh and eighth graders to audition for that, to kind of help that streamline. The middle school Drama Club is putting up Little Mermaid this year. January 18th is the opening date. I think that's all I got for Drama Club. The two a cappella groups in town, First Soundscape at the high school and Wimmy Tones at the middle school. Soundscape recently performed at the beginning of the month on, I mean, October 2nd at the Candlelight Vigil, as they have done, I think, in several years past. And they're going to continue to perform at the Festival of Trees on December 1st, that weekend. And they're going to continue with their traditional caroling fundraiser around town, which is always, people look forward to that. The Wimmy Tones is performing also at the Festival of Trees with Soundscape, but they're also doing the Solstice 5K Race in town on December 9th. The instrumental numbers at the elementary schools are in great shape in terms of numbers. The Western Intermediate, 40% of the school is enrolled in instrumental music, and 36% at the North Intermediate. So, really good numbers there. Recently, for the first time by me, but many, you know, it's been a tradition for orchestra, I went on their trip to the Boston Symphony Orchestra to see Yo-Yo Ma perform, which was really phenomenal. The kids had a great time. You can vouch for me. It really was phenomenal. And when I first kind of marketed the trip to the band, they were hesitant because it was an orchestra and we're a band. And I was like, no, you guys don't understand. You need to go and see them. And sure enough, most of them left feeling the same way I did. It was phenomenal. So, definitely something we want to do again next year. Thank you to orchestra for inviting us this year. We are going to continue the high school, sorry, the middle school and band and orchestra tradition of going to Six Flags every other year. So, we have that kind of in the works now. We go in May for the music in our parks. So, we go and we perform for adjudicators. They kind of rate us on our performance, not compared to other groups, which is what I like about it. It's really just like a grade on your performance, ignoring the other groups that are there that day. And then the conductor will come up, work with the different groups, and after that, the kids get to hang out in Six Flags for the afternoon. So, it's a really fun trip. We go every other year with seventh and eighth grades so that all kids in middle school get to go at least once, or really only once. The high school orchestra will be performing at the Senior Center on December 14th this year, which is something that they try to do every year. And I guess the only thing left is band stuff. Really, the band camp this year went amazingly well. And I think the four years I've done it, this has been the best in terms of just productivity, but also weather. Like, it rained all summer, but the four days we were at camp were phenomenal. We had a great time. We learned half the halftime show at camp, which generally, we don't start most of that work until we get back from camp. So, it was a really productive four days. And I guess I'll just close by kind of going over the concert dates this year. So, it's our traditional five-concert series. We have middle school and high school chorus on the 5th of December. We have seventh grade through 12th grade orchestra on the 7th. We have seventh grade through 12th grade band on the 12th, 5th and 6th grade band on the 14th, and 5th and 6th grade orchestra on the 19th of December, with the 21st reserved for any snow or things like that.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
One quick one. Going back to the Great East Festival, I was a chaperone last time, and I have a very strong memory of that because at the performance, when the judges were talking about the students, part of what they also mentioned was that clearly, coming out of COVID, the numbers we had there where they literally couldn't accommodate the chorus on the stand. They had great comments for you, Ms. Printville, Ms. Perkins, about how being able to maintain a program through COVID and have that kind of enthusiastic engagement with that range of students across the three different groups kind of blew away the judges. And it was, they had some very good feedback for the students, but that's the part I remember the most was how impressed they were with the three of you in the program you're running. It was fantastic. And so, I'm looking forward to this coming one. I kind of do chaperone a lot of those trips because they're so much fun to go.
They are fun, yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Samaha.
Yeah, I'm really impressed with the variety and breadth of all the performing arts stuff, activities, opportunities happening in Wilmington for our kids in our schools. I'm really, it really makes me happy to see all of that. So, thank you for, I know it's a lot of work putting all this stuff together. And then on the band camp side of things, I got to experience band camp this year. And I just want to say to you, thank you for providing this opportunity for these kids. It was an amazing experience for me. I got to see the progression of the band. You know, when I hear the songs, I go to the football games, I hear these songs, and I'm like, I remember that song at band camp. You know, and to just hear how much progress they've made since then. I thought they sounded great then, but then when I hear them now, it's amazing. But just the kids that are there and the atmosphere, and it's a really, really special thing. And I just, you know, as far as a committee, we need to continue to approve band camp for forever because it was really, a truly amazing experience.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Sorry, one last one. I did also want to mention that part of what I also value about performing arts in this district is it is one of the places where we do a really great job of integrating from four through 12. All those grades are part of it. It does roll all the way back to the introduction to music that happens earlier, but it is a place where the district really excels at bringing kids together and bringing kids along. And I think it's one of a shining spot for the district in terms of that part of the program as well.
Thank you.
I know that we, over the summer, were having a little trouble getting chaperones for band camp, that there were desperate emails going out. It's just like, please, we need more chaperones. Can't go to Camp Nacomas. I hope that the experiences of people like Jay and the other people who did step up and go this year kind of gets around enough that, like, that, you know, hopefully, we have to, you know, turn people, we have to sadly turn people away next year because too many people want to come chaperone band camp. But it's a really terrific, a really terrific thing. And those people who did step up, like Jay and his wife and the others, I think, are really glad that they did.
And we are too. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our consent agenda, and the first item is approval of minutes from the regular session on October 11th, 2023. Do I have a motion? Motion for Mr. Fenley, and...
Sorry. I'll second.
People, I'm not so sure if we want to approve the minutes. Second from Dr. Bryson, all in favor. And that is five in favor and, sorry, six in favor and one abstention, Ms. Burns. Next, we have approval of the superintendent goals for 2023 and 24. And I think there was a small, in the file itself, I think there was something cut off, I believe.
Bottom of Goal Two, I think.
And I think, I think I at least am, I'm comfortable approving without knowing what the rest of that note was going to be, I think. But if we could also have that fleshed out in the final goals to us. So, do we have a motion to approve Dr. Brand's goals? Motion by Dr. Bryson, second by Dr. McCallough, and all in favor. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have approval of a change in date for the Spanish exchange trip. Dr. Brand, could you say a word about this?
Yeah, thank you. So, in the packet, there's a little bit more information from our organizers, you'll see there, a slight adjustment that was brought forth to help support the program. Since you as a committee approved this originally, I thought it only appropriate that it come back to you. The details are explained there, but I'm happy to try and answer any questions should you have any.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the revised dates? Motion from Ms. Burns, second by Mr. Samaha, all in favor. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have acceptance of the FY24 Safe and Supportive Schools, continuation from Fund Code 337 grant. Do we have a motion to accept? Motion for Mr. Turner, second for Mr. Samaha.
Discussion?
Yes.
Just, I had a question with regards to this, Ms. Mary, if you don't mind. Being familiar, first of all, I want to thank you for the amount of work and diligence that it takes to go into these grants, especially this particular one. I sent an email, which I hope to Superintendent Brand that I hope reached your ears, so I don't have to recap it. But just a curiosity with regards to the ongoing coaching and consults, are we doing this in-house? Are we doing like a hybrid of outside consulting on this coaching? I'm not sure what the monies would be put to. And I guess, I also curious, because I don't think I've ever asked the question, besides the coaching aspects, are there any direct resources and/or tools, especially in the sub-separate classrooms, that this grant could be funding to enhance a curriculum and learning in those particular programs?
So, the coaching is through the May Institute.
Okay.
And they also provide professional development on, right now, we're working on Tier Two supports for non-academic behavioral interventions. So, all the funding for that would go towards coaching from the May Institute coming to support teams in all their meetings. But a part of that process is on the teams, we have specialized support staff, counselors, administration, so we're constantly looking at and including all core curriculum, which is PBIS at that level. So, the funds would go for coaching and professional development for non-academic supports.
Appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. We have a motion and second, all in favor. And that is unanimous. That brings us to warrants. So, we have Grants 10 and 11 revolving 16, 17, 18, and 19, Local 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36. Food service, 15, 16, 17, and 18, and capital four. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Fenley, second by Ms. Burns, all in favor. And that is unanimous. Then we have warrants. We have Circuit Breaker 7, 8, and 9. Have a motion? Motion for Mr. Turner, second for Mr. Samaha, all in favor. And that is unanimous. We have payroll for October 25th, 2023. Motion by Mr. Fenley, second by Mr. Turner, all in favor. And that's unanimous. And then we have special education warrants, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Motion by Mr. Fenley, second by Ms. Burns, all in favor. And that is unanimous. And that brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Three items will go in order tonight. I'll tackle the first two, and then my colleague here to my left will jump in with FY23 end-of-year report. First, though, Wildwood MSBA project update. There has been a lot of activity, as I think many of you are aware, that continues. And I'm so thrilled to be able to share with you that our visioning activity, four sessions that our designer, Doran Whittier, helped lead our community through, wrapped up yesterday. Yesterday was the fourth of four separate meeting dates. Again, I'll take this opportunity, we're going to try and compile a lot of information from this. Our designer, Doran Whittier, will put together a pretty comprehensive report with all of the feedback that was generated through these visioning activities. So, in no way does this sit in a vacuum. This will become front and center for our community to be aware of. But I just want to take this opportunity and thank immensely the many, many volunteers that we had that gave at least 12 hours of their time, probably it was more in some total, over four sessions that wrapped up yesterday. Again, I'll take this opportunity to share that we turned down no one. Anybody who expressed an interest to participate was welcome. We had many, many parents and guardians from all different sides of this town, sides in terms of elementary, high school, all across the board. We had a number of staff who joined yesterday that was specific for the activity that was planned yesterday. So, it was, it's an exciting time period. It's more than dreaming. It is really, as you'll see in this report, coming to terms with thinking about what we want this new school to look like, to feel like, and to be organized like. This vision activity is something that will help set the foundation for the direction of this school. And the byproducts of this work will be presented to the Wildwood Building Committee in due time that will help really kickstart the construction of this project in terms of its design. So, lots of great work, and again, tremendous thanks for, we had over 50 people, I think, in some total, who were participating in this. I do want to take this opportunity to bring to your attention and those who are watching at home, an invitation to, what is our first public informational forum on this project? There's a flyer that has been included in your packet, and we've tried to push this out as far and wide as we can. This first of what will be many public informational meetings will be held is being scheduled for November the 8th from 6:00 until 7:00 PM. We're holding this meeting via Zoom. It certainly will be the case that there'll be lots of in-person meetings for this project as we go forward, but probably also virtual. We wanted to make sure that we could record this session, and we weren't entirely certain if our partner, WCTV, could commit to that, but we had to plan this event. And so, this first meeting, anyway, seemed appropriate to hold via Zoom. Anybody in the community is welcome to attend. Again, that's November the 8th from 6 until 7. The overview of this meeting will be, sorry, the agenda for this meeting will be a broad overview of the Massachusetts School Building Authority Building Program, as well as a preliminary report on the existing school conditions assessment. So, November 8th, 6 to 7. Following that meeting on November the 8th, from 7:00 until 8:00 or whenever thereafter, is the next scheduled Wildwood Building Committee meeting. I'll just take this opportunity to bring to anyone's attention that those meetings, the Wildwood Building Committee, are open to the public. We post our agendas, we post our minutes, we post our presentations, and where possible, we'll always record this as well, too. So, if anybody is out there who's interested in learning more about the project or jumping into the conversations, you are absolutely more than welcome. Those meetings are scheduled, just like these meetings and any other public meetings in town, public is able to join, is able to comment, and able to watch and learn about the developments that are unfolding. So, I'll pause there. I know that's a lot, but any questions from members of the committee on either of those?
Ms. Burns.
I have to say that I think the flyer is absolutely incredible. I think it's a very engaging, very attractive flyer to bring one's attention to it. I was wondering if we could, if we might be able to put it right up on the face page of our public school website, because I think as this process continues and goes on and we continually seek community engagement in this, that I think having it front and center, not only on the Wildwood page, but more so on the public school page. So, it's one of the, because I did notice that the high school, middle school summer book reading of 2023 is still up on the site from...
We'll take, we'll look at that.
Yeah, no worries. It was for May. But I'm just saying, maybe we could replace it with these updates and these forms, because I think the, I really do, I think the flyer is great, wonderful, so wonderfully done. And I think it would grab somebody, anybody who would visit our page.
Thank you for that. And credit where credits do would be not myself in that design, but this is Ingersoll back there. We're fortunate to have her. And just to note, this has gotten shared with all of our schools, requested for principals to send it out to. Tracy, help me out. I know it went to the town hall.
Went to the town hall, went to Senior Center, went to the library, posted on WCTV. It is on the district initiative page for the Wildwood MSBA project, but the current events is what you're talking about, the thing that rotates, that can get put on the homepage.
Right. Like, when you bring up the homepage, I'm thinking that it should just, like, scream out, as opposed to trying to find it. I think it's much more, because I personally want to know, where would I find, even if it's as simple as go to the current tabs. But I'm just saying, I think it really should be front and center. And hopefully, do you know if the town will be posting it on their website?
They did a push email message.
I'm sorry?
They did a push email message.
Okay, so it doesn't go up on the town site itself?
They, he didn't, the IT director did not tell me if they were putting it on their site aside from their calendar, but they actually did a push email out to all of the constituents that they have on their distribution list, with, it didn't have all the graphics, but it had the links and the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Mr. Samaha.
I'm just curious about on the 8th, is this, is that forum going to be just informational or is that a place, or is that going to be sort of interactive where people could ask questions and get answers?
I would characterize it as largely informational, but certainly, I suspect there will be opportunities for questions. But it's really those primary, those two primary topics. The visioning activity that I just mentioned to you, actually, that's not an error or oversight. It won't be presented at that forum that evening. The reason being is twofold. One, they'll still be compiling all of the results and assembling that into a report. And two, I know that they very much want to share the results with the Wildwood Building Committee first before the, you know, sort of the general public meeting. But mostly, this first one, informational, but it's a great point or question, rather. And this was mentioned last night by our designer in the meeting. There will be, through future forums, much, many opportunities for the public, community at large, to weigh in, to give their thoughts, their feedbacks, and their feedback and their ideas on what is developing and taking shape. So, that will be to come.
Mr. Turner.
Quick one. Heard some feedback about the visioning in general, that it was very, very good. The only thing particularly was that some of the cases, they felt like there wasn't quite enough time. So, they were having such good conversations that they could have gone on longer, knowing that they spent a ton of time on it to begin with. But it was, my understanding was, it was well organized and well done. So, thank you to them and you.
Yeah, I think we're fortunate to have a great firm working, Doran Whittier, on our behalf. And I think we're in great hands, so.
Mr. Fenley.
Dr. Brand, one thing, comment, suggestion, request. You were talking about, you know, these sort of upcoming chances for folks to provide feedback, things like that. I would ask that during this overview of the process, if we could call out, if we have them, we might not yet, dates when we're going to ask the public to engage, town meeting, things like that, right? There are going to be some votes that need to happen. So, if we know those, I think it would be helpful to call those out. There's a lot of information going around, so.
And that will be, I'm fairly confident in saying that actually, at this first meeting upcoming, they'll give a broad overview of the timeframe and timelines that we have to adhere to with the MSBA process, including such things as time periods when town votes might have to happen and, or will have to happen, that kind of thing.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. If not, if there's nothing else, the other item, the next item, rather, is item B, the joint town meeting. And West Side Elementary Schools, there's an item, or there's a memo, sorry, for both from Town Manager Hall as well as myself, that, as you can see, of course, went to the school committee, the select board, and the finance committee. A little bit of background on this item. Through the visioning process, actually, honestly, through the many conversations, one of the clear themes that has arisen from those who have been involved in the process thus far is certainly a great understanding and appreciation that this project is focusing on the, potentially, on the Wildwood, the North, and the Woburn Street, what we broadly refer to as the North side of town. There's great interest and curiosity around what the plan is for our other three elementary schools, knowing that by and large, they're all fairly similar in age. And so, this has certainly come up a number of different occasions through our visioning activities. It's something that has caught the attention of our designer, Doran Whittier, certainly myself, and other members of our team who are part of this. And so, I shared this recently with the town manager, and we really thought that it would be an appropriate time, an important time, to try and kickstart a broader conversation. You may not say kickstart, but restart it. In fact, if you think back to the multi-board meeting or tri-board meeting that we had also in this room back, whenever that was in the spring, where there was a clear, there was some clear discussion about the importance of that. So, as you can see outlined in the memo, we had this meeting, the folks, we had extended invitation to the three chairs of the three local boards, school committee, select board, and finance committee. Paul and myself were there, along with George Hooper, and as mentioned, Town Manager Hall. We really kind of, it was, I think it was a very productive meeting. It was a good, positive meeting in the sense of making sure that our, at least our town leaders in this sense, had this clear understanding of what is starting to surface out there, this interest for what's the plan for the other schools on the West side of town. And the proposal that came out of this was... And the proposal that came out of this was perhaps a joint or a tri-board meeting, all three committees coming together to understand, understand this more broadly, understand as well the timeline and the intersection with this project, the MSBA project. And what I mean by that is this, you know, as a reminder, I think, for everyone, we can, as a community, only be in one MSBA project at a time. This is a core building project, is what they call it, we can only be in one at a time. This project, according to our owner projects, owner's project manager, or OPM, would be forecasted to close out in 2029. It would be only at that time that we could apply for MSBA funding as a community again. And at best, if we were invited in, that would mean that a potential project, new school of some sort, on the west side of town, if I can use that term, would therefore be not opening until approximately 2036. So 2029 is the closeout of this current Wildwood project, and if we were to apply, and if we were to get in the first go-around, which, as you know, we talked a lot about, is not so easy to do, we, I don't think we got lucky, I think we had a demonstrated need, but we're talking about a good number of years away. So really, what this begs the question of is, what is the plan for, for our other three schools going forward? So it's our hope that we will be able to get some agreement around a meeting date. We have some proposed meeting dates that we tried to be mindful of. My understanding is there may be a conflict already with a select board meeting, that maybe it was overlooked, but nevertheless, there's a few dates to start this. And it's my hope and recommendation to you as a committee, that you'll certainly consider this and, and hopefully want to be involved in such a meeting. I think it's important for our community, our entire community, to engage in this conversation. It's an important one, so I'll stop there.
I'm going to just jump in real quick. When, when you say that the closeout date is in 2029, I just want to emphasize that that is after the building opens, that there's a number of activities that have to take place to formally close out the project. So you don't, you know, you don't open a new building, people go into school, and the next day you can apply to, to another, to another project. The school is anticipated to open before 2029, but again, sort of closing all the books on the project would not happen until that point. Ms. Burns.
So I think, I think it is wise, we certainly can't wait, you know, another 15 years before we begin to even address the west side of town. I think we need to do this in conjunction at some point, and I hope that the other boards in town, and the municipality itself, supports that idea and understands that idea. And I do recall from our previous joint meeting, it was touched upon. So I, and I find this actually very, really quite important, considering where we are with our schools, and I, and I do think that having intermittent meetings, joint meetings, to discuss it with all boards, I think would bode well with regards to careful planning, both financially, locationally, any mishaps while we're in this process with Wildwood, because I think that would share a lot of light on, let's say, sites and areas, even in the interim. But I do think that having a collaborative approach, first and foremost, with the FinCom, the Board of Selectmen, along with the municipality, to continue this conversation, I think we can still move forward without the expenditure of money at this juncture, but to form, I think we do need a formal plan, because we can't just start this as the Wildwood project is closing, it's, that would, the west side of town can't wait that long, in my, in my opinion. But I do have a question, I don't know if it was discussed, knowing that Town Manager Hall is going to be retiring next week, and Mr. Samaglio is kind enough to, and has been appointed interim, I was curious with regards to this current process, and the one we've just touched upon, about how that transition's going to look like, how well up to speed will he be, just emerging into traffic, so to speak? And I didn't know if the assistant town manager, if it was, I didn't know if you've had those conversations, what this transition's going to look like for the current project and going forward in the discussions at the west side.
Well, I can say, I've actually reached out to, to Mr., to Lou, to try and set up a meeting. I can appreciate the shoes, the seat, rather, sorry, that he's coming into, and there's an awful lot of activity, of course, with this project, and it's an important time period, so I'm hopeful to have a meeting with him sooner than later, to bring him up to speed. There's been an invitation extended to him to start now, immediately, to take over. Mr. Hall has been a partner with us, with our planning meetings, with a smaller leadership group. I don't know if we have a meeting tomorrow, our next meeting, I don't know if he's going to be able to attend, but he's been invited to that, so I recognize the need to onboard him, so to speak, to this project of critically, quickly. Town Manager Hall has been very much at the table through all of our meetings with Doran Whittier and our OPM these last few months, so it's an important time period to get him up to speed.
And I think that if there's anybody that helped in that process as well, which I'm sure that there will be, who have been, who've had, it's not like maybe Mr. Hooper could collaborate, just so that we can, we can support Mr. Samaglio in getting him up to speed, so, thank you.
Dr. McCallie.
Thanks. Yeah, no real questions, just comments. So first off, thank you for initiating these meetings, I think they're going to be really impactful, and, you know, I really agreed with pretty much everything that MJ said. I think it's great for us to start thinking about the future, and thinking about the other schools that are not going to be impacted by the MSBA program. You know, one thing I just wanted to kind of comment about, too, was, I remember last time we had it, there was some feedback about, you know, you can't have west side and north side and all that. I think it's just the unfortunate circumstance we're in, it's sad that we have one side and the other, and it's just the constraints of the MSBA, and that's the world we're in right now. But I think if we can just all come together and figure out, like, hey, we have three other older schools, and we need to address them, and how are we going to do that, and how are we going to come together and do it, I think maybe we could find a good place going forward. So that was all I had to say. Thank you.
Quick one, first of all, thank you, again, same sort of comments, and I do, my memory of those meetings, and my memory particularly of Mr. DePalma, when he was here recently, there is, and what I've heard and seen is there is an understanding across the town, and I really appreciate this understanding, that we do have the needs related to all six of these buildings. And so I do, I'm very happy that this step happened, and it seemed logical based on where we were with those conversations. Specific to this, it doesn't say necessarily Doran Whittier or the OPM would be at this meeting, but some of the bullets in terms of the agenda seem like they would either be them presenting or you presenting on their behalf. Are we anticipating they'd join us for that as well?
No, not necessarily. I actually think that we can, we are, we have developed enough of a sense of this and where this might go, that we frankly don't, don't need them there. That's not to say that they, we might not invite them, but we have a very clear understanding around the MSBA pipeline, if that's a, if that's a path to go for funding, and I shared broadly speaking what that looks like and its limitations. We have engaged in some conversation with Doran Whittier and our OPM about, you know, they know our story, they know our situation, and they have shared with us some thoughts and ideas about, if they were in one of our seats, what might they do? So there is some more, you know, in the interest of time, I won't go into that here tonight, but there's some more information there that we can share on sort of their, not on their behalf, but tapping into their understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fendle.
Thank you. So I wanted to ask a question, and I don't know, Dr. Brand, maybe you know Paul, maybe you know, forgive me. After the last sort of tri-board meeting that we had, some of the conversations I had with folks in the community was sort of related to the direction that we're going as far as building or rebuilding or updating these schools, as it related to the facilities' master plan, which has been around for five or six years now. If I recall correctly, forgive me if I'm wrong, that plan was focused to consolidate four of the lower elementary level schools, and now we're kind of talking about all six of them, right? So like, on the north side of town, the Wildwood, the Woburn Street in the north. So I just want to, A, make sure I'm correct, and B, sort of throw that out for the community, that, you know, this might be an important part of the conversation to have if we're looking at consolidation, so.
Yeah, I mean, Paul will jump in certainly, but that plan, the one that you're referencing is that, I think it was completed in 2018, it's been sort of known around town as the Harriman Report, Facilities Master Plan for the entire community. Schools were certainly a central focus of that plan and that review. Going back and taking a look at it a number of different times, and I did again recently, you're absolutely right, the recommendation, and it was a, I think you used the word roadmap or a, or a recommendation of pathways that the town could consider for all of its public buildings, but specific to the schools, the recommendation was to consolidate, sorry, to close the Wildwood and the Bowwell, to shift grades around so that the Woburn Street would be grades, sort of pre-K to two, and then the north would be three to five, and that mirror image on the, on the other side of town. So the plan suggested for the community to consider doing that, closing the two early childhood centers, renovating, improvements, space, and everything else for the four buildings, for an approximate cost in $2,018 of $100 million, just a little under $100 million for those four buildings. So it did not speak about MSBA funding, but it had a very, this is a public report, anyone can look this up, it had a breakdown of the estimates at that time. So it didn't talk about a financial strategy for the, for the town, but those were earmarks of the dollars that they felt that the time would take to bring those buildings up to code and everything else improvement-wise. So, you know, if you take a look at that, four schools, MSBA pipeline, you know, that would be three decades or so if you got in every time. In the absence of MSBA funding, it didn't go way into the, you know, financial plan for the town, so.
I think that these conversations are good to get started, and at this point, it's, I think it's worth emphasizing that they really are just conversations, because we don't have too many active steps that we could start taking. Certainly, we're not going to start building anything on the west side anytime soon, we're not, we haven't even, we don't even have a design or shovels in the ground for the new Wildwood school. But the question is, what, if anything, could we be doing now, thinking ahead, trying to, again, get into long-term planning and not find ourselves in a situation that we do know, you know, thinking back like, ah, if we had had conversations 10 years ago, would we be in a better place now by kind of planning our way through it a little bit more carefully? And so how do we make that happen in the future, so we're in a better position than we would be if we're not, if we don't start thinking about it now? So when we, you know, if we have this, you know, have this meeting, which I hope we will, then we may end up essentially just saying, you know, there's nothing concrete we can do yet. No, nothing, you know, no, nothing to put on the warrant for the town meeting, no, you know, no studies to do, or maybe there is, but we could easily just say, not yet, we need to get further on this other project, see how that starts to shape, you know, that's going to, obviously, we're going to learn a lot about school building and design as we go through this process, which hopefully we can then apply to our thinking about what we potentially do on the west side of town. But by starting these conversations, we don't miss out on a point where we suddenly say, ah, if only last year we had thought about doing this, and then we could have had this already, but now we have to push it off a year because we didn't plan, we didn't think about it. And having these conversations early is, you know, hopefully going to prevent that from happening, and make sure that we put ourselves in the best position as possible. Ms. Burns.
And if I could just piggyback off of that, I think, I think there is work that we could move forward, that would be productive when we do get to that point of action, bullet points that we need to explore and investigate further when we do reach that time. I think, I think my biggest concern, biggest handicap to I think any of our building projects is going to be site, site size, you know, taking into consideration the amount of wetlands, environmental laws that are tied into those wetlands that we have here. I think that's going to be our biggest factor now and in the future, is what sites could be considered to maybe think about consolidation at some level. And I think that, that is, and I think those conversations now, I think, are very going to be instrumental in laying the foundation as to how we step off when that time arises. So I thank you for stating that, Dave, because you're right, it's clarifying, I suppose. Thank you.
Mr. Turner. Sorry, one last comment, and it is a form of a question, but could, could some of this lead us to alter a bit of how we're thinking about the current project? And I mean that in, if we're able to use the visioning twice, use the architectural work potentially twice, if we, if we know, to some of your points just now, Ms. Burns, about spaces, potentially, is there a way to do this in a more affordable way to get the best bang for the buck? If we design a school that is really great for the north side of town and could be mirrored for the west, because we have the right space for both, and it's the right design for both, if, that's a big if, without going too far, like derailing the one project, we'd never want to do that, but if we can be thoughtful about how we do the one project to try and be more efficient for the second, considering they're so close together, obviously, if you're building them 10 years apart, things change, but if you're building them closer, then maybe we can reuse and not have to pay quite as much for, for some of the services that go along with the construction of the project.
I suppose it's possible, I think that sort of the hypothetical there would be, this, this process leads to an ideal, you know, configuration of an elementary school, that perhaps, and again, I just want to stress, nothing has been determined through this process, there's no, consolidation to pre-K to five is, this process is not there yet, and again, our designer is approaching this work with no assumptions made, they can't. But let's say that we do get to a point where there is the ability to, and a will, to build a consolidated school pre-K to five. Perhaps that building can be mirrored on the other side of town, however, there are aspects, like you talked about, about site exploration, can it even fit anywhere, even if there was a desire in the town to model that or mirror that? So those are, I think, are, and there are other preliminary, you know, pieces of exploration that I think this time can certainly permit, and would be, we would be wise as a community to explore that. All right, I think we're good on that. Thank you. And the last item, there's the fiscal year '23 end-of-the-year financial report.
Thank you. In your packet is the FY '23 end-of-the-year report that was submitted to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This report has to be done once a year, and it identifies every dollar that comes into the district and every dollar that goes out of the district, so it's a pretty voluminous report that all districts have to do. So just your information, that's the report that we submitted on September 30th to DESI. Ms. Burns.
Can you explain, I know this is a whole new system, and it's a new system for me to look at, can you explain what the gray-out areas mean, and I'll start with that, I only have two questions, right?
Yeah, so some of the gray-out areas, some are where you can't input anything into that field, but other gray-out areas have to do with, from DESI's perspective, they calculate a net school spending amount, and those categories are not included as part of net school spending, so that's just what the report is set up that way.
Uh-huh, okay, good to know. On line 10, page, excuse me, page 10, line 258, I think, the program has it as guidance counselors, and knowing that we use school counselors now, I didn't know if that was hardwired into the program, or if that can be.
Yeah, no, this, this file comes from DESI, and you can't, all you can do is enter numbers.
No, no problem, I just was curious, just to, thank you very much, it was really the only two questions, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Callie.
Just one question, so this was good, really comprehensive. I was just wondering if you could explain how food services works now, that the state's now providing all free meals for everyone around the state?
Yeah, it works no differently than it has in the past, other than we're not charging anyone for meals unless they want a la carte or something, over and above what they get. So the federal government and the state provide a certain dollar amount, I don't know what it is, $4 or something per meal, and that goes into our food service revolving account, similar to what, the way it was before we had free meals, where as barons or guardians would put money in their students' accounts, and that would be how they would pay for the, the food.
Gotcha, all right, thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Thank you for all the data, all the, all the hard work that went behind this.
All right, it's always, always amazing to kind of, you know, look through this report and just see, and the warrants, too, even just like on a, kind of a, you know, throughout the year, and just, just see how much we're doing, how much is going, much money's coming in and going out of the district, you know, how many different people that, and services that we have to pay for, and to make, to make the system work. So it's seeing it all together. All right, if there are no other questions, then I believe we are, next on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Fettley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had received a number of written public comments that were in the packet, and I know we've read before the meeting, no one has signed up to be here in person to provide a public comment, but we will open the floor if there's anybody who would like to. Very good.
All right, and that brings us to new business, and the first item is literacy updates, so, is that it? And, he's back in court.
Good evening, thank you for having us on the agenda this evening, we're excited to share quite a few updates with you about what's been happening at the elementary level with literacy updates, so, let's see, we've got our, so, this evening, we will talk about our literacy pilot updates, a little bit about science of reading, the screening and assessments that we use at the elementary level, new early literacy screening regulations, and what's happening with reading intervention in our district, and a little bit about communication and collaboration with families. So, first, I wanted to provide an update for you, last spring, our, actually, I can't remember exactly when we came to you, Melissa was here with me presenting last year, actually, on the day we found out we got that grant, and we, all last year, our elementary teachers, we had about 30 people on a committee who were working to, as part of the literacy committee, to identify programs that we wanted to pilot. So, we spent a great deal of time last year doing that, and this current school year, we started the year by piloting two different programs. So, we have currently 15 pilot teachers right now on our committee, at least two at each grade level, some grade level, we had a few more, we had a lot of interest, teachers were really excited about the opportunity to pilot, so that was great news. In addition to the pilot teachers, we still have others on the committee who are weighing in and, and supporting the process through different lenses, special education and, or reading specialists, things like that, to help weigh in on the work that we're doing. So, we started the school year by piloting Wonders program, which is from McGraw-Hill, that's winding down, we have about one more week of that, so we did a two-month pilot with Wonders, and those same pilot teachers will be, they actually had the training last week to launch into the next phase of the pilot, which will be piloting the inter-reading program from HMH, Hilton Smith &amp; Harcourt, and the, this pilot process, we, we do in this way so that both, the pilot teachers get experience with both programs. I've found in my experience with different pilot models, if you have half the teachers piloting one program and the other half piloting the other program, at the end of the day, that's what they know and can speak to, and, and it's really difficult to get to a consensus when you have that limited experience with the other program. So, we worked, Melissa and I met over the summer, really carefully looked at the scope and sequence of each of the programs to ensure that in this type of pilot model, one, that we were picking materials from each of those programs that would make sense for the students who were living in that experience of piloting two programs, that they weren't getting repetitive information, that they were getting the standards that needed to be taught, so we did a really careful map of which units that would be piloted in each of those programs to make sure that it was meaningful for the students who were participating in the pilot and not disconnected in any way. And also to give the teachers, you know, enough insight into what they were experiencing to really get a feel for the programs. So, in, we will finish the pilot of inter-reading in the, by Christmas break, holiday break, and when we come back in January, the literacy committee will, hopefully, will do a lot of discussion and, and some protocols to help us with the deliberation of making the final decision around which program we want to recommend for full implementation for next year. In March, during the CIT day, whichever program we select, we hope to train all of our staff in, at the K to five level on the implementation training, which is usually a, like a three-hour launch into implementing the program. The nice thing is that the pilot teachers, and we have a lot of them, have that experience with both and can really be supportive of their colleagues to help with that implementation as we get going. The other nice piece of this is that in a typical adoption process, usually, we are waiting until the fall, until after July 1 to be able to order materials, because we have grant funding that will help to pay for this, we'll be able to order at least some of those materials this spring in order to have the materials in hand for the training and for teachers over the summer to start to prep and think about, work collaboratively together to start to plan for that implementation. We intend to have the full K to five launch of this program starting in September of next school year for all of our students. Both of these programs, so as I mentioned, last year, the literacy committee did a ton of research and a ton of work, really digging into all of these different programs. Both of the programs that we are piloting currently are really comprehensive and evidence-based. What, some of the criteria that the committee developed is that we really want a comprehensive program that, so, you know, we, there, there's no such thing as a perfect program, and we know in some cases, there might need to be some additional supplementation of a different particular skill or, but we wanted to at least start with something that we felt was really evidence-based, comprehensive, and had all the components included in it. So, both of these programs, Wonders and Inter-Reading, have been reviewed by DESI's Curate and Ed Reports, and they, both of them meet expectations across the board. So, we've dug into all of the different components within these websites and really looked at those deeply to get a sense of, of, you know, what those ratings were. So, we feel pretty confident that both of them, it's a great foundation for us to, to have as our tier-one curriculum. And you can look at these programs in both, sometimes they have them listed as grades K to two and three to five, and this one, I think, Inter-Reading is actually K to six, but they, they met those criteria in both grade spans, which was important to us.
So, oh.
Yeah, oh, sorry, I changed it on mine, I always forget here.
That's okay, no worries. So, science of reading, I'm sure that you have heard that term, right? And it's kind of the buzzword in education, but I wanted to speak to that a little bit. And it is the culmination of 50 years of educational research from multidisciplinary researchers, not only at the university level, but cognitive scientists, neuroscientists, all coming together to really give us some evidence about how we learn to read and how we read as humans and literacy, so reading and writing. I think that the most important part of this definition, this definition comes from the Reading League, which has been the leading organization in trying to define what it is, because a lot of people, like I said, it's in the newspapers, it's on the Today Show, and talking about that, and so, it has become a bit of a buzzword, a lot of people that think it's just like phonics only, right? And going back to the basics of like, well, we gotta drill and skill, so to, you know, drill and skill, let's say it, got it? You know, it's just that type of thing, and it really is, and it's a lot more dynamic than that, but I always say that if that's their entry point, if they just believe at this point that it's phonics, that's okay, because that's where they're entering their journey, and it's just a continuous, ongoing education about how dynamic this research is, and it is evolving. There is some what we call settled science, meaning that there is enough evidence that shows, yes, this is almost undisputable about how this occurs in the, either the human brain or in reading, and so, there is what we call settled science, but there's more and more research studies occurring all the time that come out and either, you know, further define a point that was made or help us to think differently about things. So, I think that what you want to think about with the science of reading is you want to be flexible, it's about being flexible in how we approach education. So, when I talk with the teachers, we're so short on time, I don't know if you know that, but, you know, every single day, like, we want to be as effective as we can, and that's what it's about, it's about reflecting on our practices, our literacy practices, and making sure that what we're doing is effective, right? We all have the best intention to do our best every single day, but are we doing the most effective instruction? So, it's about, you know, bang for your buck, so to speak. What I like about this is I really like that, the last line here, let me see if I can find it, and I'm sorry about that. You know, it's given us evidence to inform how proficient reading and writing develop, why some have difficulty, and the most effective ways to assess and teach, which is, the outcome is to improve student outcomes, therefore, prevention of or intervention of reading difficulties, and I think of it as literacy, I never like to separate the two pieces. Reading is the in and the writing is the breathing out, so they go together, those two processes can't be separated. So, I just wanted to kind of speak to that a little bit and know that, like, as educators, when we're talking at the school level about science of reading, we don't even use that term because it's not a thing, it's a body of evidence, so we reflect on our practices and we say, oh, we can do this practice, you know, phonemic awareness has been one that we've spent a lot of time on, so really, know that we don't use that umbrella term, but you're going to hear it, and if that's where people are at that point, at this point, that's okay, right? Because we can move them along in their journey of understanding how dynamic the evidence and the research is, and, so that connection is awesome. There is the Scarborough's Reading Rope, which is a common one that you're going to see, but what's interesting about this, do you have a pointer?
Yeah, but I don't know that it works very well.
That's okay, plus, I'm afraid I would blind Glenn, so we probably shouldn't do that. So, all right, so, on here is word recognition, which is at the bottom, so that's phonological awareness, that's the ability to be, be aware of sounds in language, is a huge base for reading, believe it or not, all of our language, reading and writing is phonological awareness, and there's the decoding, which is what you might refer to as phonics. Sight word recog, sight recognition isn't like the sight words, you know, the flashcards, like the, of, is, you know, those, it's not exactly that, what that is, is that the word has actually been imprinted into the back of your mind, it has been, it is in there, and you can't help but to read the word when you see the word, so it has been imprinted into the back of your brain, and it just comes out automatic, and you really want to get, us as proficient readers, we have thousands of words that we just read automatically, we can't even help but to read. But when you're young, we have to help them in that process of getting that, those mapped into the back of their brains. So, the word recognition is at the bottom, it's very important to read words accurately, automatically, and fluently, right? So, that's the bottom. The top part is the language comprehension, that actually has nothing to do with written symbols, it's your background knowledge, what you know when you come to the table, experiences that students have had at home, vocabulary, their depth and breadth of vocabulary, language structure, that's understanding the syntax and semantics of our language, what, that, you know, subject comes first, then predicate, I can talk about this for hours.
I'll put my phone down.
Sorry. Verbal reasoning, inferencing metaphors, that type of thing. Literacy knowledge is huge in of, in and of itself, it's a print concept that print travels from left to right, that there's different genres, and each genre has a text structure. So, knowing those two pieces are what come together to make comprehension at the end, where it says skilled readers, the whole object of reading is to comprehend somebody else's written words, right? So, all of that comes together to the right side, which is comprehension, but you can see how if any of those strings is not solid enough, it impacts it on the right. So, if you're only reading at 50% accuracy on the bottom, 50% times one whole impacts your comprehension on the right. I'm not going to try to do math because that's not my strength. So, I, you know, so we'll stop for questions at the end, but just a quick overview of how we in the schools view that science of reading thing, and then just a quick explanation of what it is.
And through all of our data meetings this year, the first part of them has been, and last year, I should say as well, has really been professional development for the teachers, so, before we jump into the data, Melissa has done a, a ton of, you know, shared a ton of information with teachers around, about this, and so, it's, we've had sort of that embedded PD around this topic as well. The next piece I wanted to talk about is our literacy screening and assessments. I think we shared last year, as part of that grant, we were using some of the funding to purchase DIBELS 8 for grades K through five as our universal screening tool that we use as a part of our MTSS model. So, DIBELS 8 is fully endorsed by the Department of Ed as an early literacy screening assessment. We did a lot of research to figure out, we, as you may recall, we were using AMES Web last year, and we needed to supplement AMES, AMES Web to get us the information that we needed to really hone in on identifying students who might be at risk. So, this assessment actually really does a nice job, it's fully approved, gives us additional information, and it really helps us to predict risk in our students, so, we have, it provides us with measures of processing speed, phonological awareness, and the alphabetic principle, which are really important for the dyslexia screening purposes as well. DIBELS 8 partners with Amplify to provide an interactive dashboard called M-Class. We were very fortunate with that grant to be able to purchase a multi-year license of Amplify, of M-Class, so, our, so the DIBELS is free to anybody on paper, you can download it and use DIBELS itself, but it's, when it's partnered with this dashboard, it's very interactive data, the scores populate, teachers can actually see those scores, all of our teachers have been trained in using it and administering the assessment and then interpreting the information through the dashboard. But in addition to the scores just being digital now, it really allows us to have really, like, it provides instructional recommendations, so it'll pull the students' data into, a classroom teacher will see their students' data, and it will automatically regroup kids and say, based on the data, we suggest that these students work on this particular skill, these four students should be working on this as their next skill. It identifies the lowest level skill where they have a deficit or a relative weakness, and it gives instructional recommendations, so groupings, but also instructional recommendations with materials and suggestions and lessons, that kind of thing, it provides a lot of information for our staff to be able to really use in an interactive way. So, it's a much more dynamic tool than just having the assessment data, and it also allows them to set target goals for progress monitoring, and then they can go in and, and check the progress of their students, and they set, you know, it gives them, you know, if they want the student to be, you know, moved to the next level within the next six-week cycle, this is how aggressive that rate of improvement needs to be in order to achieve that goal. So, it gives us a ton of information.
So, part of that was, we wanted to do that work on the front end so that we were in line with the new regulation for the early literacy screening that took, it took effect July 1, and it is to help us screen in the K to three range for students who may be at risk for a reading difficulty including dyslexia. So, it, that screener was fully approved to be used for that purpose, but what that screener then, how we can then use that is students who are significantly below benchmark will be, need to be, the parents will need to be notified, but this helps us to identify those students in a real, concrete way, and the predictors of the DIBELS 8 are better than the AMES Web were for that purpose, so, so students who score in the well-below average on the composite will have another, do you mind moving that on, sorry?
Sure.
So, within 30 days of screening, the school will inform the parent or guardians of the screening results as well as the included intervention plan of what we're going to do about it and offer an opportunity for a follow-up discussion. The regulation calls for just at a 25% cut score. The regulation calls for just at a twenty-five percent cut score. So any family, any student that scores below twenty-five percent, but, uh, DIBELS actually identifies at thirty-seven percentile. So we decided that we would be more transparent, and we would use that as our cut score, so that we know that we're catching all those students that are in that bottom part of the, uh, of the scale that may be at risk. So, uh, we just concluded our first data meetings for grades one through three at both schools, Shoshine and Woburn Street. So we're going to be, uh, reaching out to those families and providing the letters, as well as our intervention plans, that will have very specific goals and progress monitoring that goes with it. And, uh, let's see, students, so, yeah, five, so.
I would just add that the, um, you, on the slide, you'll see that we, on the last slide, it said that it was the lowest twenty-five percent. In AMES Web, we were looking at the twenty-five percent as the cut, right? So we just quit, we were thinking that that was what it was in DIBELS when this presentation was put together. And then Melissa did some digging and actually looked at those cut scores, and it's thirty-seven percent. So rather than changing that, we said we would much rather be more transparent and communicate out to families. I'd like to point out, though, that, um, there are students who are, um, you know, above that thirty-seven percent, are still receiving intervention support from us. They're just not considered significantly or well below. Um, so the, we have already, um, sent out permission slips, and we're already working with all of the students who, um, showed an identified need, um, at these grade levels for reading intervention. So that is happening currently. The information that will be coming out are, is the more formal letter to families that, whose students fall in that well below category, with the very specific details around the, um, the plan, uh, the goals. And at, we've always, um, you know, encouraged families to inquire if they had questions about it. But we really want to make sure that these families have as much information as possible, and, you know, they're certainly welcome to, um, set up conferences with parents, or conversations, or Zoom calls, or phone calls, whatever's easiest with the teachers or interventionists to get more information. Um, we're hoping that the information we send home will really be thorough and informative for them. But, um, again, really wanting to be as collaborative as possible with families to make sure that we are, um, doing everything we can to support students. Did I miss anything?
No, no, I was just going to add that we've always, you know, we've been doing this work for a long time of this whole, this process. And I know I'm new to Wilmington, but, uh, I think now it's about being transparent with families and, uh, sharing the information, really partnering with them. This would be the type of information they would talk about it, uh, at conferences, or things like that, or meetings with, you know, our interventionists and classroom teachers have tons of meetings with parents who, you know, reach out and want to know more. This is just kind of putting it out there more, so that the families are more aware, uh, of where their students are, so. Do you mind that one's? Uh, I did want to speak a little bit about reading intervention. We are really lucky, and I want to thank you for the amount of reading support that we have here in this district. It is like an anomaly, it is a, it's awesome. And we're lucky that we have a lot of really qualified professionals that work in the reading department. Uh, so I want to, you know, put that out there first. Uh, I want you to know that, like, reading now isn't like, you know, remedial reading from, say, like, twenty years ago. You know, we don't just pull the lowest students and read books with them. We really are very systematic in our approach with what we do with them, uh, when they've been identified. Uh, when they have been identified, we do a number of additional informal assessments, they're called. So we really dig into what do they, what can they do, what should they be able to do, and what are they doing? So that we can really, uh, pinpoint what do we need to work on first, second, and third, depending on the skills. Uh, let's see, intervention, uh, we use systematic evidence-based instructional practices. So for the most part, for the, what we would call tier two, which would be your first step. You're in tier one when you're in the classroom, tier two, you're going to reading intervention. We use UFLI, which is by the University of Florida. Uh, what was the last word?
Uh, Institute, uh.
Yeah, sorry about that, we looked that up, I always refer to it as.
Literacy Institute.
Literacy Institute, so we use as our tier two for everyone. And then if you need more fine tuning, so to speak, we go to tier three, but we'll talk about that on the next slide. Uh, groups are typically in a three-to-one ratio, twenty to thirty minutes, four or five times a week, so it's pretty intense. Uh, interventions, in addition to what they're receiving in the classroom, uh, in small group targeted, still with their classroom teacher, they still get instruction in the classroom as well. Uh, if they don't make the expected progress, we progress monitor every other week. We come back together in six weeks, and we look at the student's progress. If they're not making the progress, we change something, either it's the instructional approach, the group size, the amount of time. You know, so we really try to tweak it. If we feel as though that is not working, we may recommend to do what's called an SST, which is, uh.
Student Success Team, our former IST process.
Yes, so, uh, we may say, like, we have done a lot of things, and we are, we suspect that there may be something else going on. And we'd like for a bigger group with, uh, more, like, uh, special education there, spec- uh, speech and language, whoever else we think, uh, would help give us more insight into what else we can do for the student, so. And so this, oh, thank you, this refers to the tiers, so tier one is the whole class. You could be, uh, in the classroom and receiving small group instruction, right? We have yellow students that stay in the classroom, they would be in the tier one. Tier two is a targeted small, and so then you can see it moves up to tier three, and it becomes more and more intensive as it goes up. One thing I do want to circle back to, the DIBELS and the M-Class, what I really like about that is it ranks every one of the students in your class. So it, from the student that may need additional support, but all the way up to your highest level students. And it gives them lessons that they can do that's going to push those students at well, as well. So that's, uh, really been a, uh, great resource for us to add to our toolbox.
Whoops, that is weird, where's the, uh?
We're not seeing.
Where's the text? Let's see if it's on here, oh, there it is, okay, not sure what happened to mine. Um, so thi- this slide, just, these last couple of slides were actually from, um, a slide deck that was shared out with families as well, and parent, um, during open house. But we just wanted to reiterate how important this is. Um, as Melissa said, we have been doing, um, a lot of work around MTSS and really building capacity in this process. We are using, um, you know, excellent screeners. We're, um, really doing as much as we can to shore up our tier one instruction while, um, we're piloting and getting ready to implement a new program. Um, and our, um, you know, we've done a lot of work with the interventions that our students are receiving. So we are, really want for, uh, to be as transparent as possible with families, to know that we're on top of this. We're screening kids multiple times a year, we're having a lot of conversations about students. Um, and so part of our goal this year is to really try to be as transparent as possible, to earn trust of the community, to know that we're doing this work, and that, um, we want to partner with them. So we just want to make sure families know that if they have questions, they should definitely reach out. Um, and we are also, um, uh, you'll see on the agenda, um, this evening as well, a future meeting date. We'll be, um, hosting the Parent Guardian Elementary Literacy Information Night. We really want an opportunity for parents to come and be able to ask questions, and dig deeper into a lot of the topics that we just hit on lightly this evening. So we're hoping that we'll, we already have a pretty good, um, uh, number of parents already registered, so we're excited about that. We'll be here in this room November sixteenth, six-thirty to eight P.M. And the registration link is, uh, linked on the flyer, as well as the slide deck, but also has been sent out in, in principal newsletters as well. An email, um, was pushed out through, um, this is Ingersoll for, um, the district for the elementary families as well. So it would have been in your email as well, so. We, um, will pause and take questions if anyone has questions for us.
Ms. Burns?
Uh, thank you, um, so I have two questions, one of which came up in the discussion. The first one, is there, like, an approximate timeframe when one determines where a child may be getting a level, a tier-two support, but they may require more interventional and a tier-three? What does that timeframe look like? I mean, I know that you're doing constant, you, as you spoke to, um, constant data collection every couple of weeks to adjust, but I, I was just curious.
Sure, so we, we, like, as I mentioned before, we do universal screening three times a year, and then we do progress check-in meetings in between, um, scheduled. Of course, if there was something that was coming up that was more pressing, we always connect with those staff members in between if nee- if needed. But, um, at that progress meeting, um, partway through, so it's between fall and winter, universal screening, we have a, a check-in meeting where we're looking at that data together, um, with students. And oftentimes, that's, um, you know, we've been trying something, and then we change it. And then we might try the next approach and say, all right, well, that wasn't actually, um, or, we might say, you know what? That's addressed this area of need, and we're seeing significant growth. We're going to now change the focus of our intervention to address the next need, right? So if the student's making good progress through that intervention, we continue with that support as is. Um, but if we get to that point where we're feeling like we're trying everything, and we're not seeing, um, the results that we're looking for, you know, we need to maybe, um, instead of having that student in a small group with others, let's try it one-on-one. And let's give that six weeks with really intense, five days a week, one-on-one, um, and then that will help us to know whether or not.
It's sort of like six weeks intervals before, if, if, regardless if that student can come off from tier two to tier one, or.
Mm-hmm.
Be required, okay.
Yeah, at least, sometimes it can go longer, because we're seeing good growth, and we're not going to stop what we're doing if it's working.
Well, I was wondering, you know, where that, where that transition is, but that's the reason, I'm not putting you down to, well, six weeks, and then we make it six. I'm just trying to get an idea as to what goes into it, to get a better idea as to when the next step, whether it's higher or lower. Um, you know, is reasonably conservative. Um, and the other thing that I kind of wanted to speak to was, um, it's on page five, your bullet. It says, within thirty school days of a screening result that is significantly below the relevant bench- uh, benchmarks, the school must inform the student parent guardian, blah, 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 blah. That's six weeks. Uh, when you have the results, and then you, there's a six-week span of informing the parents, because that's how, and that may not be the intent, so that's kind of why I'm bringing it up. I think, in the way I interpret it, and I could, I read it wrong, but I keep reading it, um, that within thirty school days, which is six weeks, after you have that result, you got to inform the parent. But I think that timeframe is a, a little too long if you're trying to engage the families in that process. And hey, look, we've identified this, you know, this is what we're doing, this is what, if you'd like to support that, and, you know what I mean? That collaborative engagement in that process. But I think six weeks, because that's what thirty school days comes down to, is too long of a time to bring on families and say, oh, yeah, by the way, you know? Um, so I just, I really think time is of the essence, as we know, with kids who, especially those kids who are struggling because of all the other elements in their community and their school learning, that it can impact socially, emotionally.
So this time, so say we, uh, met October tenth. Yeah, that would be, you know, so say we met October tenth, right away, all the families that were identified for needing reading intervention, they got permission slips anyway, so we could start.
Phone calls home.
Phone calls.
So they're not waiting within six weeks?
No, the students are receiving support.
That's what I just wanted to clarify.
And this cycle, it seems like we're going to be about two weeks out, because, like, we have to identify the students, then we have to do our additional assessments to really make meaningful goals and a plan for that student. Yeah, we've identified phonemic awareness, this is what we're going to work on. So families are going to receive tailored goals for their students.
But that's reasonable time-wise, and that time elapsed, and I know there's a lot of work that goes in to tease it out, to custom it, customize it, to, you know, the diverse learning you're, you're trying to, um, raise. Exactly, so that's where I got a learner, so I, like, six weeks.
And that was the state, that's the state rule, you know, that was what was in the regulation. So I took that right out of what was in the regulation. We always hope.
We always know that the regulations aren't always, yeah, the best regulations. No, no, I'm just saying, not always.
It's a big step forward for, I think, this regulation's a big step forward for students who struggle to learn to read. And I think that it's great for families, right? So that's why I want to support it, and I want to get it as fast as I can.
I have no question about it.
Well, I always feel guilty if it's not the next day, I'm not going to lie, so, you know, so I'm trying to give myself some space and be like, two weeks isn't too bad.
It's not though.
But sure, six weeks.
What goes into that, and, and, and digging deep, as you said, that's, that's, that's reasonable, in, 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 in my opinion, and in, you know, what under, you know, path I've walked myself, but, but I'm saying thirty school days isn't though. So that's why I'm just, um, I mean, I know that maybe that's just the cap, but, but even, you know, that's.
Our goal is as soon as possible, and this is our first round, and it's, there's logistics involved with trying to pull this all together. So, um, we anticipate, you know, trying to get that information out ASAP to families, um, but again.
Important engaging them in that collaborative.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely, so.
Thank you, both.
Sure.
Mr. Samaha? Um, thank you for this presentation. Um, I think it's, you know, there's, um, there's a lot going on here with literacy. And it's really great to see Wilmington, like, like you were saying, really doing a lot for literacy. It's incredibly, uh, incredibly important. Thank you for the explanation of the science of reading stuff, because it is sort of like a hot topic, and you hear about it, um, all the time. And I think most people don't have a clear understanding of what that is. I thought tonight's explanation definitely added some clarity, um, uh, hopefully added some clarity, uh, for people. You know, it's one of those things that, like, in education, there's these cycles of things, and we're always trying to, you know, you know, we're always trying to do, to do the best thing, um, you know, and, and I think that, you know, we're learning, you know? It's like an, it's like an evol- it's an evolution. Um, and, uh, I, I think that, I think people need to understand that part of it as well, is that it's not like we were doing the wrong, like, purposely doing the wrong thing for years. It's like, no, it's just, we're, you know, we're, we're evolving. So the thing that we were doing twenty years ago, you know, was the thing to do. But now we're like, okay, we, that stuff was good, but we need to do, we need to alter it a little bit and add this other thing, um, into it, you know? And so I think that, the, the part about the phonics stuff, where phonics is incredibly important, I think, um, it's, there's also this tendency for people to say, see, I've been telling you, we need to go back to reading, writing, and arithmetic, or, you know, whatever, and it's like, it's like, yeah, well, phonics is part of it, but it's not, it's not, it's not the whole thing. Um, so I think that explanation is really, really, um, important, so thank you, uh, thank you for that. Um, one of the questions that I had, um, and I've, and I, it, it might not, you might not have the data because of the switch from AMES Web to DIBELS, was sort of like, number of student, like, a number of first-grade students falling below the benchmark last year as compared to this year, just to get a sense of, like, where, where, where is that? And that might not be possible, because you're switching the screeners, and also because you've got the thirty-seven versus the twenty-five. Um, so am I just assuming that that's not a, there isn't a real answer to that?
Unfortunately, we spent time looking into that to see if we could pull it out, and it wasn't a way of comparing, like, apples and apples. It was like apples and oranges, and the two different measures measured differently. So, uh, from here going forward, where we have the K to five data now, which I think was really important for us to get on the same screener, K to five, because we had a screener K to two, we, uh, looped in the BAS starting in second, you know? So it was like, and then third through fifth, we just had the BAS. Uh, so I think now just at least having that one as the base, and then when we add a new, uh, core curriculum, that's going to have its own assessments that we can do. And so, like, you, you know, the comprehension piece will be being addressed through that new core curriculum that we do. And we're, uh, we have some measures in place now to cover that as we transition, right? So we do have some transitions. But I feel the same way that you did, and have been in the same position where people will ask me, and we weren't raising illiterate people. We were doing really, you know, eight years ago, everything we were doing was exactly what everyone agreed was the best practice, right? And what we should be doing, so we're just doing things better based on our new information. It's going to continue to evolve, right? And we just have to be flexible in our thinking and be okay with it.
Right.
You know, because it's heart and head work that we do, right? So.
Yep. Thank you, so I, I guess, if I could just fa- follow that up with one, with one question, do. Do we, and just going forward, maybe it's not a question, but maybe it's just a suggestion, but is thinking about the percentage of kids in first grade, and then the percentage of kids, the percentage of those kids who are sort of not then, you know, how many students are identified in first grade? How many of those same students are identified in second grade or third grade? And just sort of comparing, and I'd just be curious to see what it looks like.
We started to do some of that work when we were using AmesWeb, but we could only do it at the lower grades, right? So we actually, in addition to having DIBELS, as I've mentioned multiple times and shared with you, we have Open Architects. We have them build, they've built a dashboard for us that we have, that we can actually track all this RTI data. So what, going forward with DIBELS being that consistent assessment for universal screening, for literacy, that will really allow us to track. Right now, we can see how many students are identified as getting reading support at Wilburn Street, at Shawshina, and we can track that from year to year. So we will have the capacity to do that easily with the system we have. But either way, we can track it once it's the same program. And we can, and I think in the past, we've reported out, you know, how many students were in the model, and started in the year and exiting the year, so we can do more of a, that, yeah. That information actually was those students that might have started the year, might not be the same ones ending the year, right? So there's that piece of it, but we can get to that layer of detail, because the idea of this model is that it's fluid, right? So you could start the year with a certain number of students and end that year, but have them be very different students, so. But we can, we will be able to get that information. I think it'll be really important, particularly with the, as we launch the new tier one curriculum, right? I think we, you know, we've been working really hard to provide really solid tier-two, tier-three interventions, knowing that we still had work to do on tier one. And that foundational piece, I think, is going to really be critical. Everyone having the same foundational core, and allow interventions to truly be interventions for specific things that kids need as opposed to backfilling gaps that they might have missed in tier one.
And yeah, for a number of reasons, right? We still deal with some COVID things and things like that. So we have a lot of things in play still, but.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Turner.
So thank you very much for all the presentation. Going, you actually just segued really well, because I wanted to go back to the literacy programs as opposed to some of the intervention pieces that fall on it. So two different things. One, with the two different programs that are being evaluated, in the moment, are they providing feedback to the teachers as opposed to the regularly scheduled sort of reviews that we do every six weeks? Is there, are there, and I'm coming at this kind of from the equity perspective and some of our other results, things we're going to talk about later in the meeting. Is there things that happen in the moment that can help a teacher as they're giving a lesson, or in, from one lesson to the next, saying, okay, this group of children, or these one or two children, didn't catch that, here's something you can help them with the next day, to try and really rectify things before they get to the point of the screenings that happen every six weeks? Is that built into either of these programs? Like more, almost instant feedback to the teachers?
Ongoing formative assessment.
Well, if they're progress monitoring, they are getting the, if they're doing progress monitoring, for anybody that there may not even be going with a reading teacher, but that classroom teacher might be like, I'm a little, I have a, there's a relative weakness, I'm watching them. If they're using progress monitoring in DIBELS, that Amplify program gives them current data of what they need to be working on, what skills they might have, you know, how, what they specifically need to do in order to get them back on track. So it does provide that opportunity.
In DIBELS, but not the literacy program.
The literacy program, like, so if you teach a module for a week, at the end of every week is like an assessment, so then that would then inform you the next week. So it may not be a day-by-day, like, we might take formative assessment day-to-day that we use the next day, but it does have something, they're kind of long, so we may have to pare those back a little bit. But there is like a one built into the end of each week. And don't quote me like that it's every grade level, but I know like grade three has, I've seen that, talked with grade three about it. So there are assessments built into the modules. So there's lots of assessment, like a lot of assessment. So we're going to, you know, decide on that. But there is things that are going to give them like immediate feedback. And it's on the computer, so again, you don't have to score it, it's immediate, you know, so.
One other question I had, in talking to a teacher in a neighboring town, and a particular administrator in Eastern Massachusetts as well, who've both implemented programs recently. Their assessment of Desi's review of the programs is, all of the programs currently available are particularly good at three through five, but the programs that are currently available all seem to have more weaknesses with K through two. I'd be curious if you're seeing that, and if you're seeing it, if there's, you've talked about some, about everyone has strengths and weaknesses, but if there's a particular chunk of weaknesses at that level, it's concerning if that's, I mean, this is the foundational element. And so do we have the process in place to support teachers so that we have a consistent filling of the weaknesses we do find? Because as we're deploying, it'd be problematic if each of the teachers had to say, oh, well, this one piece of it, one of the elements of this, one of the strings is weak in this, I'm going to figure out how to backfill that. I would think as a district, seeing that early enough to then provide the, as part of the initial deployment, okay, we know this is a weakness, this is how we're going to address it.
Do you read our minds?
I know, I was going to say, we were just talking about that.
We are like, we're obsessive about that, and there are strengths and weaknesses to both the programs. We feel as though it's really going to be, either one would be a really good, comprehensive, systematic program for our students, but we recognize that we're going to have to identify any areas of weakness on the front end so that then we can work together, you know, we can work together and then work together with the bigger team of teachers in saying, how are we going to address these very systematically so that we're all going in the same direction? And the foundational skills are near and dear to my heart, like, you know. So we definitely have eyes wide open for that piece of it.
It's important for the literacy committee to continue beyond the implementation, because I think the key component here is the members of that committee are sort of the liaisons for their teammates. And if their teammates are struggling with some particular unit, we don't want the teacher A to be like, I'll just fix it this way, or I'm going to go back to what I used to do and do it that way. But bring that issue to the committee, and as a committee, we make the decision, this is how we're going to address that particular need across the entire district.
Thank you.
I have a lot of specific questions, so I don't, I'm not going to go through those now, but if I can send them to, well, I've sent them to Glenn, so if you could forward those on, that would be helpful. I am just curious about a few things that I think would just be helpful for others here, and part of our role, like thinking about what we can do to support some of this work. So one of my questions is, are the reading teachers interventionists given time to collaborate with the classroom teachers? There's so much research about being pulled out and then using different cues out here than we're using in there. And so I'm hoping that, that we're sort of, that that's tightened, but it still happens all the time. And so part of that is just not having time for them to say, here's what I did today, and as the reading expert, here's what I did. If you could follow up on this, that would be helpful. So is there any built-in co-planning for them?
So there's some, of course, there's not enough. You know, there's, I wouldn't call it, so during, I wouldn't call it co-planning. During the meetings that we have, the progress, the data meetings and the progress meetings, there's opportunity, that's what they're doing, is they're talking and sharing. So, but those are scheduled during the year. Some of our schools have been able to build in some PLC time, where they are able to come together and talk about things like that. Not everybody has that in their schedule at this point. They, they really do go out of their way, though, the, like, reading specialists to check in with the teachers and fill them in on what's going on. But Melissa's done a lot of work with all of our staff, as well as the reading, so classroom teachers and reading specialists, to talk about that structured literacy model that they should be using, and in using the language, and modeled that language. And everybody's had that same training so that there's that level of consistency as far as not changing up the vocabulary and that kind of piece there. So it's definitely a work in progress, and we know time is the enemy. You know, we were able to add some time at the elementary grade levels, but it's still, you know, it, there's not the structures in our day that really allow for everybody to sit down and have those conversations. So it's really difficult to find that time. They're doing, they're, you know, checking in before and after school and on the fly and all of that. But it's, I think we're making strides in the right direction towards that, but still work to do.
I think that we're using, you know, starting to use the same language and identify the same areas of need. And I think like the, the DIBELS gives us like a language that, you know, and talking about phonemic awareness, and what does that mean in phonics? And, you know, really being able to talk about vocabulary and, you know, all those pieces. I think that we have started to speak a common language. So I think that's part of the battle too, is really looking at it in a similar way and taking a similar approach. It's not there yet, you know what I mean, but we are marching in the same direction, so.
Well, sometimes I even see it with our reading specialists not using the same language that the classroom teachers, as a grade level are using because of their own training. So how they might tell a child to sound something out would sound very different in the hallway than it does in the room. And so I think those are, sort of those easy fixes, that if we can just make sure there's a Google Doc and everyone sort of, for this child, these are, this is what I'm using. Or we decide as a school, we're all going to use this. This is how we're sounding, we're tapping, we're blending, you know. There are so many different ways, right, to teach those sorts of things, or snapping. I mean, kids, especially who have reading difficulties, right? They go in and they're like, wait, oh, in this, with this teacher, I do it this way, but with this teacher, I do it that way. And I think it just makes something that's already complicated so much more complicated.
Absolutely.
And I think it's easy to, I don't think it's, I think, sure, there's co-planning, but I also think there's ways, simple ways, to just make sure we're all using the same language for that child.
I wonder if that way couldn't be, the Open Architects, couldn't be a way of capturing that in the student notes? Because students who are in intervention, we have a whole note section that we can take.
That's cool.
And so that would be a good place, like, you know, then working on continuous blending with them, and then the language is there, you know, has, you know, this has been most effective way of, you know. So, yeah, so that, it's definitely a work in progress of continuing that, so.
I think one of the big things, though, is I think in the past, a lot of the decisions about reading intervention were made sort of, you know, like, somebody looking at a spreadsheet, saying, okay, these kids need it, these kids. And we didn't have all of the players in the room together. And now that has been the most valuable piece, that they're together, they're talking, they're sharing ideas. It's really a collaboration. So that, I think, is the biggest, that's the, I think, the only way to build that continuity and language and all of that, so.
And then I'll just ask one more, if that's okay? Is that okay?
Please.
Okay. So, and with the DIBELS and the fluency and the word per minute, all of those pieces, comprehension is assessed where? Not through that?
No.
Where are we assessing that?
Right, and so the maze is kind of the last part that measures comprehension. And what it does is, I don't know if you, it's kind of an unusual assessment, but it's every seventh word is, they have a choice of three words. And so what it really does is it assesses their knowledge of syntax and semantics. Can they apply it on the run to know what should be the next word and maintain meaning? So there's that piece of it. It's actually a pretty reliable, like, if they have really low maze and they've been exposed to it multiple times, and they're a fifth grader and they're still struggling with it, that's telling you something. But this year, as we transition, I didn't want to use the BAS this year as like, everybody has to do it, because it was hours of teacher time. But they have available to them the cars, which is from Curriculum Associates, so they can take that assessment. And then that tells the teacher, gives them some insight into, okay, the student needs work on main idea and inferencing. And then there's lessons you could do in the Stars book. But we also have something called Passages to Comprehension. So we made a correlation document that says, okay, they need work on inferencing. Here are the lessons that match. And also teachers have access to reading A to Z, to the teacher part of it, so they can pull lessons to either, you know, short passages to either use as a whole group or in small group ideally, right, to identify like those comprehension holes that students may have. So that's how we're measuring it. Those are some of the tools we're using this year to measure it as we transition. The BAS is still an option. If you want to know like, oh, has my student really like grown? You could do a BAS if you wanted to, they're still in their classrooms.
Okay.
So we are not, we're going to, we stay focused on like the comprehension part. We want to get them to comprehension and continue to grow students, you know, as readers and writers, so.
I think one of the benefits of looking at literacy sort of holistically like this is that it's not just one thing, and it changes, you know, as kids develop fluency with reading, that, you know, when we talk about teaching kids to read, then that's when we talk about the, you know, the phonics, and like, what, how do we teach them to decode words and sound words out? But once they can actually like, you know, understand how to get through and like identify the words, then all the other things that you were just getting into about main idea and inferences, and like becoming truly fluent readers is so much more than just knowing how to read.
Right.
And in some ways, in some ways, it's a little bit, a little bit harder because it's not as simple as just like, ah, you know, like you know when someone can read, when you can put almost any text in front of them, and they can sit there and sound out the words and actually, ooh, look, you're reading. But to really understand and get that comprehension, and that, you know, that deeper, deeper level of fluency is what we're developing in all the, all the subsequent grades. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Mr. Tracy on your way out?
Sure.
All right, and Christine and Allison, crew, I think we're ready for your bullying prevention and intervention plan.
How are you?
Good to see you all and welcome to the committee.
Thank you.
So I'm here to just give a brief update of the bullying prevention and intervention plan. I know Christine gave one back in June, but this is really brief. So every two years, districts are required to review and update their bullying prevention and intervention plan. We call it a BPIP. So back in 2019, our BPIP was extensively updated when we went through the coordinated program review, and it was approved through the department. So then again, in 2021, we reviewed it. But more recently, this past school year, the Behavioral Health Task Force reviewed it again. And back in June, Christine presented a little bit about the updates that we proposed. They were pretty minor. Then we posted for public comments. So the draft was posted June 7th to July 31st. In your packet, you will see some of those themes that we had. So during public comment period, seven members of the community provided feedback, and much of the feedback really was incorporated already into the plan. There were some general themes around discipline and consequences. So parents kind of, you know, wondering what that was, or wanting kind of a punitive consequence for a student that was possibly bullied. There was a general theme around communication and parental input, and really wanting to be a part of the process. And there was also themes around training staff and administrators and what that looked like. So we also spent some time with the school committee, subcommittee policy for bullying prevention to review that, so to make sure that it aligned with our BPIP. So I have to say, our final plan is in, I feel, good shape. It is looking good with school committee policy, the Mascherano Law, the DESI Model Plan, and it's really aligned to our new discipline laws, which I thought was nice to see with the act of addressing barriers to mental health. So coming back to the grant question earlier, DESI is really looking for alternate suspensions and what that looks like. So for eight years, we've had PBIS, and the funding through some of the grants have been able to support that effort. So we are kind of ahead of the game with that. So really looking at our PBIS model, our trauma-sensitive interventions that we're using, really all are incorporated into this plan as well. So the final plan is linked in your memo. It will be available on the website in all the schools and at the Roman House. If you guys have any questions or feedback.
Mr. Samaha.
Thank you. I, I'm curious if there is a way for, for us to sort of simplify this process and communicate something to families to sort of explain it? Because when I look at the plan, it's comprehensive and it's long, and there's a lot. And I know there's like the flow chart sort of at the end. But I wonder if, if there's another way to make it easier for families to sort of digest.
Absolutely. The thing I do like about the plan, and I know we've talked about this before, there's definitions in here, which is nice to kind of go back to for families, because some of the words are, you know, from the law. So that is a nice component to the program, sorry, to the plan. to the program, um, sorry, to the plan. Um, but I, I hear your feedback and I think even a one pager for, for families of what's in there. Um, also, our forms are pretty, um, easily accessible for students, families and staff to fill out. So we try to keep those pretty, um, friendly to, to everyone. But I, I think that is great feedback and we could certainly do like a one pager of the procedure or, or how to find things throughout the plan.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Burns.
So, um, having gone through 12 years of the evolution of, of the BPIP, I, I really do have to say, I do very much appreciate, um, how concise it is because of those, people don't have to go looking for, what, what, what does this mean? Um, I really am very, um, continue to be, uh, very impressed with the high level of, of work that goes into it, which I think is exceptionally necessary. I like when I hear that we are ahead of the game because that's exactly what we need to continue to do is, is not be in the, be the herd, but to be out in front and, and doing this for the right reasons that we know. We can't wait for the state to catch up. Let's put it that way. We can do that. Um, I'm really kind of disappointed that only seven response. I'm glad we got the seven response because it sounds like there were at least really concrete, uh, feedback from those surveys. And I, you know, I didn't know, and as you, as work begins to revise the, as you start working towards it, maybe perhaps having a, um, a midway point survey. You, we have a good concrete, you know, BPIP up that people could reference to see, you know, to see what additional things would you like to see. But have it be a part of the growing work that's going to be done in that revision when it comes due. Um, because I really do think a lot of people check out once we hit June or even the end of May. So that, you know, because I really think it really is such an important document that supports so many of our policies and initiatives that we're putting, we're implementing, um, within our district. So I only had one question and then one possible recommendation for consideration. So, um, in this revised, in this plan, um, was there any input from the resource officers or the police department? I know Section Eight references it. And I was just curious, um, if they, there was any input, um, in that development and revision of the BPIP.
Not specifically. Our legal counsel reviews it as well. So, um, not specific that we sat with the police department.
No, I just did not only, I think it's a great collaborative, another collaborative aspect to bring in a different pair of eyes. It, and in page five, section, uh, B, it supports kind of that aspect, um, of law enforcement officials being a part of that development.
Sure.
Um, and it, you know, and it, it certainly, I, I, I say, I just, I ask because I'm curious and I, but, um, I defer, I know, I defer to you folks, you know. Um, and then the one recommendation I had for, just throwing it out there for possible consideration, um, I like the idea of what specific MGL laws that you reference, um, as it pertains to this section, um, within the plan. You do reference federal law and even at the, maybe at the end of the plan, just as a footnote, like maybe noting IDEA or ADA if it's applicable in, in certain areas. But, um, I just thought so because parents who may be on the forefront and at the beginning of, it's usually, now this impacts me, where do I find?
Sure.
I think just as a, a, like a footnote, it might be helpful since it's referenced, um, within the plan. Um, but, and I also, I love the forms being right there at the end as, um, you know, resource tool, um, as a part of that. I, I'm all about that, you know, one stop shopping and minimal cooking. I'm old school, can I say? So.
I agree about the public comment piece too. I think it became the end of the year. We did extend it for a little bit, but just getting feedback earlier on in the process.
I think people were offline, but I think it, it may just help in that progression.
Yes.
Do it sooner. Good idea.
Yeah.
Mr. Turner.
First of all, thank you very much. And the definitions are fantastic at the end. Do you have one question? So there's a, a bit in the preamble that does talk about, you know, recognizing that, that students, certain students are more vulnerable due to differentiating characteristics. And then we talk at the bottom of page five, top of page six, about the data review and reviewing, and certainly all bullying is problematic. But if we found a, a particular pattern of bullying that was related to a differentiating characteristic, somebody being targeted, a group of children at any school for any of those reasons, being targeted disproportionately, is there an element of this that then goes to root cause? Why is, you know, this particular group of kids being targeted at that school or broadly, is there, is there an extra level of review based on differentiated characteristics in some of the vulnerable groups that goes into the, the review of, of what happens in the district over the course of a year or two?
So we're complied to do the SSDR data, that it really breaks it down. And DESI has supported that, looking at that data. So, um, that is something that we'll, we'll be able to kind of track and look into further. So yes.
You also receive all bullying investigations that are completed in the districts. So Christine and I, not to jump in from the audience.
Go ahead.
Also review everything that comes in during the course of the year.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to old business. And the first item is to discuss our MCAS results. We had a thorough presentation from Ms. Elliott last week, uh, two weeks ago, rather, for, um, about our 2023 MCAS results. And we have had now a little time to digest that information and come back with questions. So, um, Dr. Bryant, I don't know if you or Ms. Elliott have any preamble or anything you want to say at the beginning, or if we want to just jump right into discussion?
Um, I'll prefer to.
Just in your packet this evening, I did, um, try to include some of the information that, um, you had asked for in advance. Um, so you will see the, um, grades three to eight ELA math, science, uh, five and eight, and then the high school ELA math and science tech engineering subgroup data. That was, um, I pulled right from the school and district profile pages. But this is, and I tried to, it's a lot of numbers, but I did try to , um, color code them at least so you could track across, um, to do the comparison between the district, um, performance or in, um, those categories and the state. Um, so hopefully that, and I, I just highlighted the ones that I had actually spoke to in the initial, um, presentation. So obviously you have all of the other subgroups as well, but those were the ones that we had targeted in the first conversation we had. So those are there. And I, um, appreciated the feedback around, uh, the parent-friendly language, um, or a little bit more anyway, um, parent-friendly for the action steps. I know we use a lot of jargon, so, uh, and, um, abbreviations and whatnot. So, um, I did try to expand that out to provide a little bit more insight. Um, it was, you know, interestingly, it was, um, coincidental timing that we were providing the literacy update this evening that was already on our agenda for tonight. But it, I think the timing is good in the sense that it answered a lot of the same questions. It provided further insight into some of the questions around, um, what we are doing is those action steps. So that's all I would offer to launch our conversation.
All right. Questions and comments. Mr. Turner?
Sure.
Ready to, ready to go?
Sure. Um, so thank you, first of all. Thank you very much for the additional, uh, it was very helpful and, and spent quality time with that. Uh, the, a few different sorts of questions that, that come to mind. Um, I think I'll, the, start with the, the couple higher level points. With regard to math and science versus ELA, um, there is some pretty clear, not huge, but pretty clear differences. And, and that's, I don't think reflective necessarily, the teachers in our district, it is societal, but I think it requires a real intentionality in PD and in perhaps, um, teachers collaborating with each other on how, how they, how they do their practice to really try and, and work towards having, you know, female achievement in math and female achievement in science be at the same level as the male and the male achievement in ELA be at the same level as female. This is not, we're not unique in this in any way. But to address it requires, um, a real intentionality and a real understanding that, that all of us carry those sorts of microbiases just in, in, in our, our lives and, and, and trying to fun, find the right ways to, um, to address it is going to be difficult and, and, and is a long-term sort of project. But it certainly seems important and it gets highlighted when you see it just in this kind of raw numbers that you see with this. Um, so I, I, I hope that there's a way to have that become a focus, um, within PD and within, within other, other avenues to help the teachers. Um, have you found in prior years, looking back at prior action steps and prior ways we've looked at addressing, um, MCAS, that, that particular pieces of what we've done in the past have been most effective? Because I, you have a great list of action steps here.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you view what we've done in the past to try and address topics?
Um, so I would say that, you know, since I've been here in 2020, which the MCAS was not quite, uh, you know, the thing we were focusing on. Um, so, but prior to that, from what I can gather, so I don't, I, you know, I can't speak firsthand to the type of MCAS analysis and what was happening before. But from what I've heard from, um, principals, that it was really a, a bit more building-based what they were doing. So it wasn't necessarily, um, everybody doing the same kind of analysis. I think that a lot of it was looking at how did my students from last year, um, how did they fare on the assessment? Um, and it was maybe less about really digging into subgroup data or digging into the curriculum and the pacing and all of that. Um, to be perfectly honest with you, I have not been pulling the gender, um, data as a, you know, that hasn't been a big focus. So when, um, Mr. Ragsdale had said, you know, could you pull this information? You know, I was thinking initially the typical subgroups, you know, uh, low income, special education, high needs or, or by race. Um, but so I found it actually, you know, I've looked at the data before for, for gender, but to really track it in that way, specifically with subgroups, I found it to be really helpful. And I don't know that, that's been a focus at the, um, in the schools as they've looked at this in the past. Maybe it has, but not necessarily district-wide. Um, so until you uncover this information, you know, you don't really do anything about it until you recognize that there's an issue. And I think we, people probably had hunches that, you know, they might be stronger, you know, girl, the, um, females often are stronger in ELA at certain grades and math and sci, you know, so there's those hunches, but the data shows what the data shows. Um, so this afternoon, actually, as part of our CIT day, district-wide, um, we did analysis of MCAS, really looking at, by teams talking together, just as you were talking about, um, you know, having them come together and really dig deep into what does this data show us. So, um, I'm excited to see they're producing, um, uh, an, an analysis sheet from their grade levels and what they looked at, um, sharing with their principals, department heads, um, today when they finished it. Uh, and then I'll get to take a look at that. And I think that will be really helpful because they're developing those action steps to help address some of those things that they're seeing.
Thank you. And one, one more if I may. The, um, I did have some other general questions that I, I presume you might be able to respond to at some other time. But in terms of the action steps themselves, the ones that appear, the ones you have look very good, but they're, they seem to me to be very focused K through eight. And so part of the question I, that came to mind was if we have kids in, um, who through this particular measure are showing at eight that they're struggling, do we have action steps we need to take in nine and early in 10 to try and help address those? And then there's the piece also post 10 with children that did struggle. What do we do in 11 and 12? I didn't see anything specifically called out at either side of that tipping point in, in 10th grade.
It's a really good point. You're right. Because that is missing from this list, but those things are still happening. Um, I would say that, uh, you know, as I mentioned, K12 right now, we're doing this whole, or grade 112, we're doing the analysis. But our, um, our CTLs have done a really nice job working with the secondary teams to really go through this information. They have done that traditionally over the last four years, even when everybody else wasn't looking at it holistically. Um, but I've worked with, uh, Mr. Gendron as well, talking about different, um, plans in place. We do have supports for students. They do, um, MCAS groups to practice, uh, to support students to prepare for retakes, things like that. And I know they've done, um, they, they do have other pieces in place. So, um, really great point that that's not included here. So that's good, and good feedback for me that I can continue to add that to this document as well, get more information about that.
Dr. Mark Aldy.
Thanks. All right. I got a couple questions. Uh, so looking at the data, one thing I noticed was that for ELA, high school proficiency appears to be outperforming the middle and the elementary schools. I was wondering if you had any hypotheses on why that is occurring?
Um, I think it's a wonderful thing to see that sort of capstone experience and, and the students, um, getting there. I would say that, um, you know, I, I know that we have, um, as the presentation earlier shows, that we're, we are making a lot of transitions, um, with our tier, a core curriculum there. So I think that, um, you know, they are really doing a nice job at the high school analyzing the information as the students come up, what they need to do. And, um, and they're really, I think, doing a great job preparing them for the type of assessment, um, in the courses that we offer. We have, you know, we know that there's work that we're doing to transition that core instruction at the lower, at the, you know, elementary grades. And I think, you know, that's part of why we're seeing the lower scores because we just don't have all of those pieces in place yet. Um, so I hope to see the same, um, level, you know, increases over time with, with the work that we're doing at the elementary level as well.
Yeah. No, thanks. And to follow on from that, you kind of touched on the elementary schools. I also noticed math was a little lower compared to the middle and high school there too. Um, do you think we're still seeing any prolonged effects from COVID at all?
I do, I do. Um, you know, I think there's, we saw a dip in math, um, not, I think there was a larger dip in math overall, uh, across the state, but also in, in many of our grade levels where last year that was still really, um, strong and it was, it was, um, it was increasing. So it's hard to know really. Uh, we've been using, um, a consistent math program for a long period of time. So we have that really solid. Um, and, you know, we're, we're, um, we've added the intervention at the lower grade levels. But, um, I'm, like I said, the part of the analysis that the teachers were doing today was looking item by item. Where did we not perform where we should be relative to our own goals, but also to the state and identifying where in the curriculum was this covered? Do we have enough time? What do we think the cause is for that? What would we do to remedy that? So really, uh, being proactive to be able to make sure that we've got these things in place for our students, um, before they sit for the assessment again at the end of this year. So, um, so hopefully we'll be able to see some, um, shift there, but we'll definitely track that and see where, you know, if there are issues that we can look at systemically to help address that.
Yeah. No, thanks. That makes sense. And then, uh, just one final question. So thank you for, um, adding the explanations to the plans. So I was able to follow them and everything. Uh, what would be your expected timeline on when you implement these plans? When do you think we would see the effects on the MCAS scores? Is it going to be next year, three years, five years, anything like that?
So thinking about the implementation of a new reading program, literacy program, um, that takes some time, right? Um, I, you know, the, in some cases, you can actually see a dip in your implementation year. I have found that if we have, um, regardless of the programming, if we have, um, a high level of professional development, we don't see that dip. So I'm optimistic that we won't see a dip next year, but usually, you know, sometimes it takes a couple of years for that to really take hold. One of the things when you think about that is, you know, kids are, um, entering into this brand new program. And if you are a fourth grader or a fifth grader, you haven't had the, the, the structure, the language, the specific vocabulary in that program, K to four, to adapt to it, right? And Melissa spoke earlier about us kind of really figuring out like those pacing guides and the entry points for our students. So sometimes it takes, um, you know, we have to help, we need to make this meaningful for students as they transition into a new program. So we really have to backfill some skills for them. So, um, it might not, you know, for example, a fifth grade unit, we might not get to this because we are spending some time backfilling some skills that are assumed that they would have known if they were in this program, K to four. So we need to be really thoughtful about that to make sure that, um, students have, um, the skills they need to be successful in the program. So sometimes at certain grade levels, it could take a little longer to see those results really take off. But at, um, you know, our lowest grade levels, that's the easiest implementation. But we don't, some districts will do like a, a gradual rollout of a program, but we really don't want to wait. We really want to, we'll do the work to make it work at the upper grades. So there, it might take some time. Um, you know, I, um, you know, a lot of these, our things are currently happening. And so, you know, we're just hoping that it, it all contributes to improve, improvement in these areas. But I'd say that that particularly, the reading, um, pilot will be the one that will be interesting to really track and, and watch over time. But hopefully, I would say by the, you know, end of next year, we start to see a, a climb, um, and then even more so the following year.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Um, I'm just going to jump in real quick, uh, quickly to address your first question about the high school.
Yeah.
Levels being higher. That's something that you're going to find in basically every single district and statewide, that the, the high school, um, you know, the, the, whether you look That the, the high school, um, pat, you know, the, the, whether you look at the scaled scores themselves or the percent of a class that's meeting and exceeding expectations is pretty much always going to be the highest numbers in, in any district. And a big part of that is, for one thing, because it counts in a way that it doesn't elsewhere. As a graduation requirement, it means that honestly, the kids just work harder at it. They know that, they know that they need it in order to get their diploma, so they're more focused on it. Schools spend more time making sure that those students are prepared for it. If they have concerns, uh, that they have students who might not be able to, um, to meet the competency determination threshold. Uh, so there's, there's a lot of that going on as well. You're going to just begin to find year after year after year across the state and every district that the high school rates are just higher than everywhere else.
David, can I ask a question about that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, partly it's a question of is, do we view this as a trailing indicator or a current year indicator? Is, is performance in 10th grade reflective of eighth and ninth, or is it reflective of 10th? And the other side of that question is, do we know if Shawshank Tech breaks out its results by sending school district? Because in theory, if we'd view it as a trailing result, that's reflective of what happens in seventh, eighth, ninth, when you get to 10th, then knowing how Shawshank Tech, how our students from middle school performed there on their 10th grade would be informative to add to how we view our 10th grade results of, you know, so if it's trailing, that information would also be important for us to understand the middle school.
I think the answer is yes.
And do you know if they break it out?
That is, no, I, well, actually, I, I don't, I don't believe that they do, at least publicly. I'm sure they have that, that data internally. But I think that especially because ELA and math aren't assessed at ninth grade. So you have that gap year where, you know, you just, you know, most kids are taking science, um, they're, uh, you know, in, in ninth grade, but you don't have that ELA measure. And so it's, in some ways, it's kind of that 10th grade is the cumul-, the cumulative accumulation of what they've, you know, learned and developed, um, over both their ninth and their 10th grade year. Obviously more focused on 10th grade because that's the year they just had. But, uh, so it's, it's probably more weighted toward the current year, but, but definitely incorporates the year before.
Okay, for sure.
Uh, all right. Questions, Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, I'll, I mean, I'll just, I'll, I'll chime in here as I, as I typically time in. Anytime we're talking about, anytime we're talking about MCAS is, is trying to make sure that everybody understands that we're looking at a small snapshot of learning. And especially, um, like what Mr. Ragsdale was saying, about three to eight, the kids sit and they take a test that doesn't necessarily mean much. You know, I mean, they're going to get a score, they're going to know it, so it means kind of something, but it does not mean what it means to, uh, you know, ninth to 10th grade students taking those tests. You know, so I, I want us to understand that and, and to also understand that, uh, MCAS holds so much weight that I don't believe it should hold. That it is not the determination of the success or the failure of a curriculum or a method or schools, in my opinion. It's this one small snapshot in time. And I just, I want to make sure that everybody remembers that, um, and, and, and understands that. You know, but, so, like, I'm not saying that MCAS doesn't matter, right? Like, there is, there is a level of, I'm not saying like it's a useless thing, like, there is some use to it. Um, and working in a school, like, it's a reality, so you do have to sort of get into the, get into the weeds, um, on it. One of the things that I noticed that was sort of one of the high points is when you look at the English language learners, while not a huge high proficiency rate, their improvements, so for example, in, in ELA, um, you know, over, I mean, their, their, their grow, their, their SGP, their growth was like a 66, um, you know, and it's, it's way in a, it's way far and above the state average. So, um, I think that we should, you know, we can be happy about that. And I'm also curious, um, if, you know, even though I know I just said it's not the determination, but I, I'm curious, is there something different going on with, with ELLs? Or what might be a root cause maybe of that, if you have any?
I, I don't, um, so, I mean, I think that our folks that are working, um, with those students are working hard. So I don't mean to discount any of that. But it is difficult to look at these, um, scores for our English learners because they're the group that we, um, we hope no, loses that title because they, um, you know, become former EL. And so I think he, looking at the data on these charts, looking at the EL informer, I think that's, that's really helpful. Looking at just EL is difficult because those students might be assessed as EL as, uh, in one year, and the next year they're no longer in that category anymore, so they're not a part of that subgroup. So it can be a little bit tricky. So the, looking at them both together is definitely helpful. Um, we, you know, we have, um, uh, last year before her retirement, Susan McDonald was our teacher that was working with our high school and middle school students. And now we have Colleen working with those, our Colleen Billings, who you'll, um, be presenting to you at some point, I'm sure, um, working with those students. So they're working really hard, as well as the classroom teachers. And I will say what's been wonderful, and, um, Colleen has reported to me how, um, how grateful she is to work in a district where the teachers are, um, coming to her saying, I really, give me some ideas. I could, I want to really support this student. How can I, how can I better help the students in my class? So, um, and in some districts, there's that resistance to, you know, I don't really want to do anything extra. So she's been really pleasantly surprised, coming here new this year, that there's such a, um, a willingness from staff to really do what it takes to support the students, so.
Because I was going to piggyback off of you, so I was hoping you would go before me.
How do you know I'm going to say anything good?
Well.
Yeah.
So in watching the last meeting and the conversation around this particular agenda item, I know that Dr. Bryson had asked, an inquiry as to how are we supporting, um, children on I-504s and IEPs? And I was going to piggyback off of that, um, in that, you know, over the 12 years that I, I, I've, I've had this as an agenda item to monitor and watch, uh, we've had, we had some gains, but nothing significant to bring, to, to really bolster that subgroup. And in addition, I think I'm curious, and I'd like to know how many of our students, um, took portfolios? And what type of work is around that? Because I, I know that that's just, um, I, I'm curious to know because they're a part of that subgroup and, and, but take it in a different capacity, modality. And I'm just, I, I kind of like to find out from Dr. Bryson's initial question from the last meeting, kind of, I do want to know and answer, what does that look like for, for this subgroup on top of what, another level, I suppose, on what it looks like for, um, our students who don't take the conventional MCAS? And what are we doing? Because the portfolio situation, just, and I say this broadly and very generally, it's not really a good context of what our students may know, who may not be able to take the conventional test. But how have we, what kind of things have we done to try to meet that measure, that measure? I, I'd like to kind of have that open discussion with, um, Alice and Christine, just to find out what that looks like today and now. And then I also have an additional kind of comment that I wanted to say after this particular question, if that's possible.
Do we have the number of MCAS alt students?
Alice, do you want to maybe just come up?
Twenty-seven students, um, in district and added district combined that take the MCAS alt.
Alice, sorry, could you just come up just so the microphone, because otherwise they won't capture you.
Come on, join the group. Kumbaya.
Sit or dance.
How many within district though, Alice?
Uh, eight. Yeah. So what I would have to check and drill back on is a couple of those students, um, may have not participated in the 23 because they may have been 22 students and their IEP lapsed over into, so they're coded as alts. They may have been completed in 22. So I could double-check the exact number, but it's no more than five.
Okay. I would just like to get a, an idea of what that looks like, because that's.
Yeah. Um, so MCAS alt is used for students that have significant cognitive impairment for whom, um, wouldn't be able to access the structure of the traditional MCAS. The expectation is it doesn't exceed 1% of your student population.
And what is that, what is that portfolio? I mean, I know it's a collection of their work.
Yep.
How are, how are, how are our teachers like adjusting to meeting that bar with the performance portfolios? I guess more likely that a descriptive, you know, I, I just, I'm not entirely sure how they're rated in, at the DESI level, but I also, I don't know what adjustments, not only in, I'd be interested in how, how we're targeting, as Dr. Bryson had raised, not to still hurt under at all.
Yes, no, I'm kidding.
No, but I, I, it's kind of interesting how we targeting the curriculum piece with students with, you know, within our IEPs and 504s and, um, especially in that, in the subgroup of alt.
So the, uh, we have very small group of staff that have to participate in MCAS alt training. Because it's really kind of really just two programs of kids, not that it's tied to a program, but those students' needs often drive them to be in a very specialized program within the district. And so they, you know, they participate in yearly trainings with the Department of Ed. They have us also provide support to them regarding the MCAS alt. The MCAS alt is much more individualized, and so you can have, um, a student that might be, uh, you know, have pretty profound medical needs and maybe not be verbal at all, who has to submit a portfolio. You might have a student who has the ability to, you know, communicate, access more information at grade level. So their MCAS alts are going to look very different.
Are they graded differently based on their disabilities?
No, they're graded against the sta-, well, they're graded against, uh, each individual student needs as it relates to the standard that they're being asked to, to provide information regarding, but regarding the scoring.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are alternative achievement standards for the MCAS alt.
Depending on their.
Okay, that's, I guess, what I'm trying to gather.
And the evidence is collected throughout the year as part of regular instruction, um, to measure like their accuracy and independence of work. And then this is all collected into a portfolio that's submitted in, in the spring.
Parents review it. Parents are a component of the MCAS alt as well.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah. Um, they come in, review it, they do a presentation.
I'd be interested, even after, on a side note, what that, what those, that response was, but, um.
Can I just, I just, can I just add in here? I, I actually scored MCAS alt portfolios for like 10 or 15 years. So, um, and I was a part of, I was, I was a trainer in it. So if you want to have a conversation at some point about any of that stuff, I no longer do that, but I was a part of that for, yeah, for like 15 years.
I was just wondering if we've gained anywhere in that area. It's a different, from what my understanding.
It's a, it's a very, it's. From, from my understanding, and again, I, I haven't, I haven't been in it since 2019, 20, 2019. So I, 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 I don't have most current knowledge on it. But it's, it's hard to sort of compare, especially when you have such low numbers of students submitting them. It's, I, it's hard to compare.
It's still, it's significant in their development and, as well. It, it, you know, and, and you can't exclude them for, I don't mean that in that literal way, but we can't, you know what I mean? Still as vital to that data and the information that we need to, to know, to, to encapsulate those because there, there are subgroups that can very well be hidden, but are just as vital, I guess, in their role. How are, how are we targeting with the subgroup of the, um, students with disabilities, taking the action plans and steps? How is that being incorporated? Are they just being modified to each student's IEPs, these enhancements to the curriculum?
Um, so it, you know, every student has kind of individual goals and objectives. The expectation is always we're comparing and providing, you know, high-quality, um, instruction for students at their level, but in line with the state expectations or standards for each grade level.
So it's, it's sort of like, so, um, as we, which I think is vital and I think it's solid work, we look back and, and look at the, the numbers and see where we can improve it, whether it be literacy.
Yeah.
Uh, and other areas. How does that translate with, because students on IEPs typically get accommodations and are modified.
Yeah.
Or, how is that kind of translated within that level? Because I think it's a whole nother level of, um, I don't want to say tier support, because it's a little, it's different. But it, it, you know, it's, I don't, I don't know if I'm articulating it, um, as, as I have it in my head. But how, how is that enhanced in, within our sub-separate classrooms, the, um, focuses? You know, how do we enhance a curriculum for those learners?
Yeah. So, uh, you know, I think there's, uh, I think probably longer conversation than just now, but. No, but I think, you know, I think we're looking at everything. When you, you know, if you go back a few years, back to the strategic plan, back before the world fell apart, there was lots of initiatives that had to do with inclusion, looking at teaching everybody UDL, so that you have a, you know, uh, general education teachers that can differentiate appropriately for all students, being able to include all of our special education, uh, staff in curriculum rollouts, which I don't think was normally maybe par for the course historically in this district. Making sure that they have all the materials, grade levels, most of our, you know, special educators are working on the same curriculum. Might be in a different setting, might be in slightly different pace, might be with slightly different materials. But being part of those data meetings, I think, is very key. I think the other kind of things we need to look at as a district, and I think we're going to probably have a conversation about this maybe at the next school committee meeting, um, are things like, you know, ensuring equity, ensuring access for all students with disabilities. To do that, you need to make sure that the staff that are working with the kiddos and general education classrooms have the skill set to do that, right? I think part of the fallout of the pandemic was some of those strategic objectives that were key around inclusion, around UDL, weren't completely followed through, I think, you know, because there was just not the time. We had a year and a half of no school. So I think rebooting some of that is really important. I also think, um, you know, making sure that the collaboration time is there. I think Dr. Bryson said it, I think that's a huge component. Collaboration time for some of our special education teachers, certainly our sub-separate teachers, but with the curriculum piece, being able to do the data reviews, all of those I think are key in order to move all kids, but also our kids that are maybe a little higher needs forward.
Well, those that are not meeting expectations, just trying to see, just trying to move the, the process along.
Sure.
And I think that's a, a key piece in, in all the work that Christine and her team is doing, are doing. And, and I just, um, I thank you very much. But I, I think, and I say this to my colleagues, that I'm, I'm a little concerned in the sense that, you know, somewhat vital work is being done. And it was kind of touched upon today in discussion that I, I do think that we, we, I don't know if our numbers, and granted, it's not the end-all, be-all with MCAS, because I really don't think it's a true indicator of our, what our students know. But I wonder how much of the numbers that we're seeing is, is truly reflective in how we're teaching as opposed to whether our staff have the time to collaborate? Because I think the, um, PLCs were, were great when they were working. And then COVID and, and transitions occur and that didn't occur. But I think, I'm wondering if, if we have consistency across our teaching, our teachers, that they're, they're practicing these new initiatives or any new enhancements to the curriculum, uh, language as well, especially in the literacy area, with consistency. And wondering if they have a, like a stronghold of what they're trying to implement and being able to do so in a consistent fashion. I think, I, I, I just, I think work does need to continue. And I, I'm not suggesting stopping anything we're currently in the, in the middle of. But I wonder at what point do we maybe pump the brakes a little bit to ensure everybody is up to speed with executing, um, these enhancements? They can't stop it because you, you can, you want to fill those deficits. But I'm wondering, does staff have truly enough time to command everything that they're supposed to know? The DCAPs, the BPIP plans, like incorporate all these initiatives and, and, and the curriculum initiatives? Do they truly have enough time to collaborate and/or, um, I mean, I'm, I'm not entirely confident that these numbers aren't reflective in, in some small respect to, um, different level of, um, implementation consistently by our staff. Not because of, of, uh, knowledge, but, but because of, it's just building that skill set and understanding the nuances and the whys. And, uh, I, I'm just, I'm maybe not articulating it as well as I'd like to, but I'm just wondering at what time do we pause and make sure everyone is caught up in moving forward before we reintroduce, um, new, stronger and enhanced, um, ways of meeting education within our district? So I just say that, I just throw that out.
Uh, Dr. Bryson?
I think what would be helpful, um, I have quite a few questions, but, um, I'm going to just pass those on. But I think what's, what we're hearing here is sort of this look at MCAS results in light of some of these results from our students with disabilities and how we can. we can use that data to then say, okay, what, like I would love a deeper dive, I'd love to get inside that meeting a little bit, but just an overview for us here, I think specifically looking at that data and other types of data with that population, I think would be really helpful for us. Because looking at 504s can mean a lot of different things. And so I, I feel like we're lumping it, but there's really some nuances here that I think would be helpful for us as a committee to, to hear about. How does this, I hear how Christine uses the data, but I'd love to know sort of like, how does the team use the data? What do we do with that? Does that go back to special ed? You know, what, what does that look like? And each child is so different. Someone might have an IEP for, for anxiety, where someone might have an IEP for a learning disability. So it's such different types of children that, and so it's not just, so we're lumping it, and I understand that for the purposes of MCAS, but I do think there's a lot to be learned from looking at that. So I would just love to get inside that a little bit, just to have a sense of what that looks like. So that's my first request. My second one is I reviewed all the data in the surrounding towns, just to like see kind of where we are in relation to. And we were pretty like, sort of in line with most of them, except for North Reading, which was also brought up in a public comment. And I said, oh, I did the same thing. And North Reading was, wow. I thought, oh, what can we learn from North Reading? And my first thought was, what are they doing there? What's happening? How many school buildings do they have? So my request is, can we like leverage some of our relationships to find out? I mean, I know it's just one year, I know it's just one data point, but it's sort of intriguing to me. And I was just like, huh. All the towns were pretty similar and that one was so different. And I'm just curious to know what might be happening. So I thought, you know, we have MASC, we have MASs, it might be great to, to just learn a little bit. I'm not suggesting everyone goes over there and can we get in, can we see? I mean, but I do think there's something to be, to be learned. And that's why I have some reservations about data, to the MCAS data as you do and MJ, but I also look at it in some ways and I say, but it can really be used as a tool to, to think about sort of these, huh, what, what could be happening? And it might be maybe nothing different than what we're doing. Maybe they've had a literacy program that they rolled out four years ago and they're really seeing the impact now. But I do think that would be some interesting information for us to really, to think through as we look at this data just a bit more. I've got some other specific ones, but I'm just gonna, I'm gonna send that on.
I think some of the, one of the challenges with interpreting MCAS data is you get, you know, these numbers spit out, but then it's up to you to try to infer the lines of causation. It's like, okay, but what is the reason that we had this many, you know, this percentage, you know, proficient and advanced or meeting and exceeding expectations and so forth? And it, you know, again, it just gives you an end result and it leaves it to you to figure out what it means and what might have led to it. And I'll, I have to say that, that this year's MCAS data, especially in aggregate, I'm, I am finding it kind of hard to really interpret and have a sense of what I, what I think it means. I mean, MCAS is a little bit of a blunt instrument and I think it's best used in the aggregate and also to look at comparisons and trends. That like the more you try to interpret like, well, this student got this and that means what? Well, it's like, God, it could mean like a million things. But when you look at, you know, one of the benefits is that it's fairly consistent over time as far as like the test is. So I, so I try to look at, again, like sort of aggregate comparisons and trends, but even there, it's somewhat, it's somewhat confusing. I think something that probably some people looked at that was somewhat alarming, for example, is that like our grade seven ELA this year has the, one of the lowest percentages of meeting and exceeding expectations and only 30% of our grade seven students met or exceeded expectations. But that was pretty close to what it was last year. It's not a new trend. If you, if you, if you move that cohort back and look at, and obviously it's not literally the same students, like in, like 100%, but it's going to be pretty close. Last year's sixth grade ELA, you know, 34%. And then here's the odd thing, you go back one more year, when those students were in fifth grade, 59% of them were exceeding, were exceeding expectations. And that was in the 2021 year. That was in the crazy hybrid remote learning year. And then, but at the end of that year, 59% of those fifth grade students in that crazy year of learning were meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA.
Is that the modified assessment that year?
I mean, it was a little modified because it was only one, it was only one session instead of two sessions. So instead of being session one and session two, you just took one session. But, but even then, I mean, that's a pretty big, that's a pretty big, pretty big difference. And sure, you know, you only do one session, but you only, you take them on separate days, so it's not as though you're more tired because you don't take them all together. So, you know, two sessions gives you a psychometrically more accurate result than one, but not like to this, to this degree. So there, and there, you know, and if you look at, for example, even at their growth, so again, you have that 30% meeting and exceeding from last year's testing, but the growth was only, was in the 45th percentile, you know, which is not terrible. I mean, obviously it's below the median, it's below the 50th percentile, so it, but you know, you don't even, it, it wouldn't be considered low growth. You like, usually have to be like above the 60th percentile or below the 40th before you start talking about specifically kind of like high growth or low growth. It's just right kind of in the moderate growth there. And that's true of, of a lot of the information here. And so kind of trying to trace back what's happening, it's like, I don't quite understand what that means. It's just like, you'd think that things would improve once we get back to more normal school, which we had last year and the year before, even though those were hard for different reasons. Anyway, so I, I think in the end I come to a, just like a place where I, I have found this information a little bit harder to interpret in terms of clearly, like I can draw a line from what we did to what these results are or to the experience that the, that, you know, the students went through in, you know, during the, the height of the pandemic. And I have to admit, I'm having, having trouble drawing some lines here. And I mean, I think especially when we do some of the breakdowns into the, into our subgroups, we find some more, some more useful information. But, but I think at the top level, it's really hard to kind of know sort of what it means as far as a causation of like what produced these results and then what different things going, going forward would just produce different results in the, in the following year. So that's kind of unsatisfying as a matter of interpretation and trying to know what you're. But unfortunately, sometimes, sometimes the data you collect doesn't always give you, you know, clear, clear pointers of exactly what you want to do. And that's just the vagaries of interpreting data.
Can I just add to that? And, and I'm going back to Dr. McCarty's question too. So, you know, based on, I found the same thing as if we were analyzing this data because I found surprises. I'm like, oh, I didn't expect that, you know? But the, you know, we do the best, so we look at this as one data source and we think about all the things we need to do, whether it's from our strategic plan, whether it's from outside evaluations and looking at all of those pieces. And we try to have our action plans match what we really think are the things that are going to move us forward in hopes that we see these same, you know, improved results in the MCAS as well. So it is hard, you know, to say when we will, when will we see the results from this action step from that? We hope that it will be that direct correlation, but it is, it is, you know, I feel like this year we're able to do some more root cause analysis, which I think will really help us sooner than later and really implement things. So I'm optimistic about that. But I, I agree, sometimes it's, we're making our best guess based on what we know is happening in the data and how, how it reported. And sometimes those subgroups are, it just takes time for that particular group, that cohort, not subgroup, excuse me, that cohort to, to catch up. And that cohort is one we are, that you mentioned at eighth grade, or seventh grade, that is one we are watching closely and supporting as much as we possibly can through intervention and win groups at the middle school. And that is a group that I'm keeping data, watching as we go to see, hoping that we see the same 10th grade results for that group as we're seeing now, so.
David, can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
And this brings me back to my, to the earlier point about the types of intervention and how kids are being pulled and identified. To just be, I just worry when we start to, we're, everyone's going here and everyone, I just worry that there, are they being pulled from other places where they should be, where they would be exposed to more grade level content and then they're being put into, into additional labs where it's actually just repeating the same instruction, but not really a specific type of instruction. So then they're not in their other class, but they're here. So I just want to be careful about sort of all of, I think it's great and I'm so excited, but I think the data piece is so, so important, especially at the middle school level. I think it's going to be really important to, to track that carefully because it hasn't, because that type of progress monitoring hasn't been done. And so it's, it's new and there's that risk of saying, here's what we're seeing, let's try this, let's do, and so I just want to be thoughtful about, about that sort of, I think it's, it's going to be a project, but it's, and it's important work. And I do think it's going to have benefits for us, you know, in the, in the short and the long term. But to be careful about this group here and this group there and this group, I just think it's, it can get messy and kids wind up missing a lot of important grade level work that then can put them, as we all know, can put them farther behind.
And, and we do really try to, you know, having the established win block at the middle school is really helpful in that they're not missing core content. At the elementary grade levels, we don't, because of the length of our day and all the different content that needs to be covered, we don't have a set aside win block. So we have to be really creative in how we provide that intervention and that, that's a struggle. It's a real struggle, but we do the best we can because sometimes kids need both math and reading intervention and we're trying to make sure that, you know, we're, we're, they're not missing core content. So it's something that, you know, and I know a lot of districts do have that same win block at the elementary grade levels and it's something that, you know, we're, we're talking about, but there are a lot of demands on the schedule for curriculum instruction at the elementary grade. And we still, even though we've added time, we still have a relatively short day in order to get it all done. So we're looking at that to figure out what the best approach is, but.
And I don't say this in response to MCAS data, I mean, to David's point, we're not looking specifically at it, but, but I do think this focus on assessments, oh, and bringing that back to us so we can see, so that this should, this should not be the only time we're looking at assessments. And that, this is what, this is what it becomes and that's not healthy for us because we're going to hold on to this data as the only thing. And we don't have any other data, so when people ask me about these results, I'm like, yeah, it's no, it's no, I know. I mean, I don't, but if I had other data to then share or say, if we could be more transparent with some of that data, and now that it is being collected, I think it'll be a really, it'll be a different story that we're telling, I think, moving forward.
I just have the last brief, I promise for it. And thank you for all the conversation. There, I completely agree with so many of the comments and Mr. Smah, your comments around MCAS, but just to share with our community, you know, we, despite the fact that we sort of encapsulate this, this time in terms of a couple of presentations, we are taking, the leadership team's taking these results certainly seriously. I hope you get the sense of that, where there's deep dives that are happening for sure. And there's certainly pockets of concern that we hold for the results, notwithstanding what MCAS is, and I believe as well too. It's a, it is a snapshot, but it's still a jumping off point. And it reminds me, and I can appreciate that for some perhaps around this table, no doubt, some of the community, some mention around our subgroups and, and special education in particular, and some, some focal, focus of concerns there. When I joined the district five years ago, there was, special education was one of the foremost areas of concern that I know I heard time and time again. For those of you that were around this table, you will recall that I think it was going into my second year where we commissioned, or the end of my first year, a third party to conduct a review of our program. And that report became known as the Walker Report, something that we talked an awful lot about up until, if memory serves, up until the pandemic. And for lots of understandable reasons, we didn't really at great length return to that report around this table. Maybe some stops and starts with budget planning, but not more comprehensively. And it seems to us as we've been talking about this, that it would probably be a good time to do that. Because despite the fact that we've not been talking about it maybe here at the table in front of the community, doesn't mean that there hasn't been focus or attention or, or efforts to align improvements with that report. So, you know, with, with, you know, the chair's permission at some point, perhaps the next meeting or some point thereafter, it seems timely to me, to us, that we bring that back to you and give you a crosswalk of sort of what was put out at that point in time and where we're at. So it's more than just MCAS, but certainly related to our services and programs within, within that important area. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. And then our last item of old business is the bus transportation update.
Meant to be very brief as, as the memory hopefully shows you, but just to keep this alive, I know it's been a continual point of concern and cover, conversation obviously here as well too. Just where sort of things are at right now. Obviously this was a big week for us, both with the arrival of the additional bus that started on Monday, as well as the change in start times that you approved recently went into effect. So, you know, of course, we're here just at the end of day three. Things are, are working themselves in as you, and I, I know so many of you have shared your understanding that, you know, this is a new layer here that will take some time and some adjustments. But that being said, from my vantage point, when I take a look at the data online, I think great strides have been made across the board in both our arrival times in the morning, as well as our arrival times in the afternoon and ultimate delivery of students home. Just to call out that for any member of our community who's interested in those times, we are and will be for the foreseeable future, posting all of those times on our main website. There is a, a link to a, a, a pretty easy to read spreadsheet, call it that, where anyone can see the arrival times that are generated by GPS tracking. The, in addition to communication around that, the bus app from some of the feedback received has been very positive. Some kinks were worked out initially, but for any family member who might be interested in signing up for that, and we are looking to, as you know, expand that to the entire district. Next steps as we, we look ahead, as you'll note in the memo, we obviously have a little bit of a lag time here before our next meeting together on, on November 15th. But as I've suggested to you there, I know that this needs to continue to be a source of our focus and conversation. And as outlined there, the intention would be to come into that meeting with a snapshot of, you know, the transportation service and, and how things have gone since we've instituted these recent recommendations, recent changes, sorry. We're gathering some, and we'll continue to gather writing information as well as student ridership to pull that together with you. And of course, very soon going into the budget picture, we have to make some decisions around the fleet size and what it is that, you know, collectively we are aiming for. So November 15th, we'll package together much more information than what's before you here today and continue this important conversation. But with that, I'll take any questions if folks have.
Sure. Comment and just like one or two questions. So thanks for the update. I've been looking at the new, new worksheet, find it interesting just to see the data and the performance. I found it encouraging to see that vast majority of the routes are arriving on time in the morning, which is great. Afternoon performance has been improving as, as well too, which is fantastic. I use the app, I think, you know, after you said the bugs got worked out, it's fantastic. I noticed I'm not standing outside with my daughter for the bus for 15 minutes, you know, I know exactly when it's going to come and same on the backside. So looking forward to using it on the winter time, so less time outside in the cold as well too. So yeah, just maybe a question or suggestion for the meeting on the 15th. Kind of curious on how the new bus is being deployed in the fleet. So was wondering if, if you or Ms. Ferretta or someone could maybe walk us through which routes are going to be addressed by the new bus and the expected impacts of those.
Yeah. And that's just to clarify, that's already happening. Certainly the impacted, many impacts of that are, are already rolling out, but we can certainly provide you that update for sure.
Great, thank you.
Anecdotally report that a very exciting thing happened in our household, which is that my freshman daughter got to school early for the first time and didn't know what to do. Wandering the halls, unfamiliar experience and just like, oh, now, now, now she knows that you hang out in the cafeteria. Time to go to, go to class, but it was previously unknown to her. And so that was very exciting. All right, thank you for that update. Next we have subcommittee reports. Ms. Burns?
Hi, I, Tracy was kind enough to add, and I tried to comprise this as best as I could from watching the last meeting, presented to you the resolutions that you voted on at the last meeting. I'm not going to go over them because I, they're there for your review. I think what I'd like to focus on is a couple of things. I just want to make sure that I got the language correct with regards to, I just, as a verification, just want to make sure that I got the language correct for resolution seven specifically and eight. So starting on seven, I will let you know that I will, I will ask the presiding, I think it's the past president who presides, to take these amendments separately so that they're voted on separately and not together. So, so if one fails, we may, you know, get the second one. So I just want to make sure if there's any questions with that. And I also needed a clarifying question with regards to, to make sure that I can argue it if need be, the moratorium with regards to, the, the, with regards to, as it applies to high school graduation requirements, I want to understand, I think better, the request for the moratorium, as it pertains to that piece, because I, I'm not, I don't think I'm entirely clear to have that argument if I have to present and support this.
I think the language actually needs to be altered here a little bit, so what you have written here is that MASC urges Massachusetts, this is our, our amendment, to enact a moratorium on high school graduation requirements. I think that needs to be rephrased as, to enact a moratorium on the MCAS high school graduation requirement.
Okay.
Because it's not, that's what the point
Thank you.
... of the resolution was. Or at least of the amendment.
Maybe that's where I lost...
Because in the, in the, in the discussion, the committee basically said that like, we don't really agree that, you know, that, that the, there should be a moratorium on MCAS testing, but that a moratorium on the graduation requirement was something that the committee supported.
Oh, so more of a, I'm just trying to ration, just a piece of that. I absolutely understand that piece about not, the complete aspects, and I don't think that's gonna be viable to start with, depending, knowing the political and financial investment that has gone into MCAS to start with, but...
I mean, for one thing, I mean, testing is required by federal law. Every Student Succeeds Act requires federal, requires annual testing, so you gotta do something if it's...
Well, right, but you would, you know, I won't go down that path. I don't want to digress, but I, I just want to make sure, if I'm asked why specifically, that I, it's portion control? Is that the best way? I don't, I'm just trying to articulate it.
If I go back to where we were at the last meeting, if I remember correctly, the idea is, is as drafted is enact a moratorium, period. And our suggestion is, it's to amend that, not say enact a moratorium, enact some of the consequences of the MCAS. So right now, there's a consequence of MCAS on graduation. There's a consequence of MCAS
Thank you.
... receivership of districts and schools. And so acknowledging, to Mr. Agastel's point, that we have to do testing, we have to have something, and tell we have something else in place, it has to be this. But some of the consequences of it have been damaging to students, and some of the consequences have been damaging to schools or districts. And so those are the purpose of the two amendments.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other changes in that language than? Moving on. Okay. So, resolution eight, safe storage to firearms. So, the first question I have for you is, the, the amended language? Therefore be resolved, MASC recommends all districts to urge their superintendent staff, department with their local law enforcement agencies and public departments, blah, 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 blah. Any changes to, was that what, that, I believe that was the motion Jesse put forth? Does that read correctly?
I think that captures
Yep.
What the committee approved.
Right. Thank you. Did you have a question?
No, I was gonna say, is that clear?
No, that, that's clear. I just wanted to make sure that the language was accurate, because I was doing this, I was taking notes from Ben, and I had to watch the meeting a couple. So, at this time, I would like to put forth a motion, I'm gonna try to do this correctly. Thank you, David, for guiding me. I'd like to take a motion to amend the amended language as it pertains to resolution eight, and that there be resolved portion.
All right, so this is a motion to amend something previously adopted?
Yes.
Is this motion?
Where?
All right, so, so the motion is on the floor. Is there a second?
I didn't fully grasp the motion. Can you restate it?
So it's, so it's basi- I'm basically making a mo- a motion to revisit the vote for discussion of resolution eight, is what I'm putting before the floor.
You want to propose new language
New language for
To amend, to amend resolution eight?
Exactly.
I'll, I'll second that.
Yeah, all right. So a motion second discussion, so can you talk about your proposed language and
Thank you.
... rationale for it?
Appreciate it. So, in, in watching the meeting and the discussion that was had around this resolution at the last meeting, I know there was, I know you, and I have to say, absolutely appreciated the conversation. I think what I did is, I came up with what I hope may, because I know a lot of it was, it wasn't concise, and it really wasn't kind of applicable in the way that the resolution was initially written. I, I wanted to put before you new language that encapsulates Jesse's changes, along with the further be resolved, which I think is, is kind of a, be it further resolved, I think encapsulates some of those, that language into one piece. I'm trying to make it, with thought I make it concise to capture those aspects without it being, I'm not articulating, forgive me, as well. I, I just compiled, I wanted to propose to you folks about possibly amending the amended, devoted upon, language, with therefore be resolved that MASC recommends all districts to urge their superintendent and staff to increase collaborative efforts with their local law enforcement agencies, that should read public health agencies and nonprofit organizations, to create appropriate joint communication to parents and guardians that explains the importance and obligations of secure firearm storage in their homes and vehicles, to protect children and teens from unauthorized access to understand, to unsecured, excuse me, firearms, and their legal obligations consistent with Massachusetts state, safe storage law. And then do away with, be it further resolved, just compiled in one lump paragraph.
Comments, thoughts, other discussion? Dr. Bryson?
Okay.
I love you, Jen.
Sorry, that was hysterical.
Mr. Turner?
I kind of have a process question with the conference, because you've done that a few more times than I have. I don't object at all to what you've suggested. Is it easier to amend one bit and leave the other bit? Or is it easier to amend one larger and get rid of the second? Which is, which is more likely to be successful, is what I'm getting at.
So, I, I, I just think the therefore be resolved and further be resolved was along the lines of the previous conversation, that it was a little vague, it really wasn't really quite on point with regards to what, you got the essence of it, but it really didn't, wasn't well written, so I just figured I took those elements and just merged those things that seemed reasonable, and those topics on which the focus on, into one bullet as opposed to two areas. I was just trying to combine the concerns and conversations in the last meeting with regards to what was written, what was amended, to try to enhance it, for better.
I will quote our dear colleague, Dr. Bryson, and say, okay.
All right. Do you have comment yet?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So all in favor of amending the language of our amendment to resolution eight? And that is unanimous?
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you. I never would have thought of it, but sure.
All right. Any correspondence?
No, this evening.
All right. Upcoming dates, the Lamp Laters Drama Club performance on November 3rd and 4th. On the 3rd, it will be at 7:00 PM on Friday, and Saturday, it will be at 4:00 PM, to avoid conflict with football, so. In case you're thinking that there's a conflict, there isn't. You should come to the play and go to the game. You're gonna have a wild Saturday, is what I'm telling you. It's gonna be the best Saturday of your life. On the 8th, as I mentioned before, is the Community Forum and Wildwood School Building Committee meeting. November 15th is our next regular session meeting. The 16th is Elementary Literacy Night at 6:30. And the 27th to the 24th will be our Thanksgiving break, and then we will be back in December, on December 6th, for our first meeting in December.
I just have one more item, that the eighth grade parent night is tomorrow evening here at the high school. Eighth grade students visited this, yesterday, actually, and so tomorrow evening, eighth grade parents, information night here at the high school.
Okay. Mr. Turner, anything else missing? You, you often have, have an addition.
I will defer to the meeting minutes, which will list what Mr. Farrar said about all the upcoming band and other musical events happening in December, early December, so I'll, I'll defer to those notes that will come forth.
Lots of great musical performances coming up.
Yes.
All right. That brings us to the end. We have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Dr. Bryson, seconded by Dr. McCallie, all in favor, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.